Good evening, everyone. My name is Anne Savage and I am the president of the City School District of Albany Board of Education. On behalf of the board, I welcome you to this, our first in some time, virtual meeting. I'm joined tonight by the entire board as well as Superintendent of Schools, Kwayda Adams, and we appreciate those of you who've taken the time to join us in time or are watching this recording. For those of you who need instructions or more information about how to watch our live stream meetings, you can find those instructions at albanyschools.org/boe. We will include all the relevant slides and documents in the virtual meeting screen, and you can also access those slides via albanyschools.org/boe if you prefer to be able to control the slides yourselves. With that introduction, we invite those of you who choose to join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In addition to saying the Pledge of Allegiance, we always focus our meeting by restating the mission of the City School District of Albany, which is to work in partnership with our diverse community to engage every learner in a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. Superintendent Adams, do you have a report for us? Superintendent Adams, you're muted.
Thank you very much, and I think I'm clicking too many buttons here, but welcome to 2022 and Happy New Year. And as we begin this new year, we are absolutely facing some of our ongoing challenges with COVID-19. We know that attending school in person is what is best for our students. It is what we want for all of our students to be in school every day. We knew that before the pandemic began almost two years ago, and it has been reinforced almost daily since then, that the academic and social and emotional challenges that have developed or deepened for young people locally, nationally, and around the world are extremely significant. In school, building our caring relationships with our teachers, administrators, and support staff is where the students need to be. We also know that this is what is best for our families as we all balance work and our personal lives. Trying to find the right balance amid the continuing presence of a deadly worldwide pandemic is very, very difficult, and these decisions that we have to make within our school district, we don't make them lightly. We make them after analyzing the data that we have at hand. With schools reopening this week and Omicron becoming more and more prevalent, faculty, staff, and students are more exposed to COVID-19, and this exposure heightened the risk as we returned from the holiday break. We see the evidence in our daily COVID-19 reports and the daily reports from Albany County. This disease is spreading at an unprecedented rate. COVID-19-related staffing shortages have compromised the delivery of quality instruction and the supervision of our students in all of our schools. So we are taking steps to mitigate the spread. We remain committed to providing our community with the resources and the support needed to keep our students safe and healthy. Over the New Year's weekend, we rallied to develop a process for distributing more than eighty-five, I'm sorry, eighty-eight hundred COVID test kits that the state delivered to us on Friday. On Sunday, we distributed more than twelve hundred of these test kits to our families, and our school leaders also developed plans to distribute the remaining test kits to our families this week. And so I want to take a moment to acknowledge that in receiving those tests on Friday, December 31st, I want to thank Ms. Roaring and Mr. Kiefer, our new director of facilities, for being on hand and available to receive those test kits so that Laura McKenna and our PPS department could then get those tests, organize those tests, and have them ready for delivery. We also have a whole slew of people that we want to express our gratitude to who came in over the break in order to make that happen. We had our PPS department, we had our administrative secretaries, our safety and security team, communications and operations, and I know that I listed that in a memo to our public beforehand, but I think it is worth it to make sure that people understand that behind the scenes and over the holiday weekend, there were people working on behalf of our students, our school nurses, we had volunteers from faculty, student volunteers came in, our medical director was there in order to make sure that we were able to have those test kits ready to deliver on Sunday. These efforts are also continuing through Friday so that you can visit your school's webpage for information about when pickup is available at each school through Friday of this week. If we find that we need to extend that, we will look at that and assess where we are on Friday so that we can then set up additional pickup times for our families. We know that our families have received the instructions on using the test kits and reporting the positive results to the county health department and our school nurses. We also have continued weekly COVID-19 testing for our employees who have yet to submit proof of vaccination, as well as for those employees who opt in for testing regardless of vaccination status. We will offer daily COVID-19 testing for students and employees at six buildings beginning Friday as well, and next week we will be able to offer the PCR test. So we are continuing with those efforts. As we continue to monitor our data, we will continue to follow the guidance and monitor the COVID-19 cases in our district and make our decisions in the best interest of our students, families, faculty, and staff. Our goal is to return to in-person instruction as soon as possible. We want to reiterate that we know that shifting to distance learning is a hardship for many of our families, and we also want to reiterate that it is not our first choice. So when following the guidelines in the meantime, we ask that our families continue to follow the COVID-19 health and safety protocols at home, including wearing masks, frequent hand washing, and social distancing. Please avoid large indoor gatherings. We also encourage and urge vaccinations for everyone ages five and older who are eligible and able. In addition to those families who have yet to pick up a COVID-19 test, please visit your school's webpage or contact your child's school regarding the distribution and schedule for test kit distribution. Thank you for all the sacrifices that you have made and that you continue to make throughout these frustrating and difficult times. All of your efforts are deeply appreciated. It is now my pleasure to introduce Principal John Powell to share information about the great things that are happening this school year at Montessori Magnet School.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome Superintendent Adams, and thank you so much for that, and good evening to the board and to everybody watching. I'm excited to be here. I thought I'd finally get a chance to present in front of you because I think I'm going a couple of years in a row now with it being this format, but hopefully for next year we'll do it in person. Got a bit of presentation for you tonight to highlight some of the things that we are focused on this year outside of the obvious focus that Superintendent Adams just spoke about, but I begin, as you did begin the meeting, with the fact that our vision, mission, and goals for the district, of course, are our great umbrella over the work being done daily at Montessori. And on our next slide, I'll take a moment to read what specifically is our vision, excuse me, our mission for Montessori in particular. So the mission of Montessori Magnet School is to create and support the development of a responsible culturally diverse community of individual learners through diligent work in and adherence to the Montessori philosophy and method. And so I wanted to make sure that I slid in some pictures that I thought are really important to the year that is, and so you see the first there is our amazing maintenance staff who highlighted, I think, in a recent district publication or on the website, it was, we did a great parade for the men who have kept our building clean, kept our building safe, and really have been a role model for how to just do great work every day as we look for our students and our staff to do just the same. So led by Mr. Prince, Allah, right in the middle, great, great man. So to look at the demographics of Montessori, it's held pretty steady since last year. We have three hundred and thirty-two students, actually welcomed eight new students this year in the last running of the lottery, in this week, excuse me, new students. We are pre-K through five building with fourteen Gened classrooms, eight being multi-age and six in the grades three, four, and five now being departmentalized. We have four self-contained classrooms for our students with autism, and the breakdown gender-wise is exactly opposite of what it was last year. This year it's fifty-three percent male, forty-seven female, students with disabilities ten percent, economically disadvantaged at thirty-three percent, and then you can see a breakdown of our different ethnicities below, largely staying static year over year. As you know, of course, each building builds a SEP plan for the year to come, and so there's many more things in the SEP than you see right here, but wanting to pull out some of the things that have been, I guess, most meaningful and have really defined the year, Tier One planning. So the idea of planning for students at the whole classroom level has been a great effort with a focus of trying to make sure that when you're planning for the entire class and you're looking at data and you're really regularly considering the progress that students are making, our teachers, along with our coaches and our reading teachers, have been this year on a monthly basis resetting the class, resetting the groupings of students in math and reading so that we can make sure that the instruction is targeted directly towards the individual learner to a degree we haven't achieved before, and I would tell you that if you were to inquire, I think the results and the response of the teachers has been quite positive. We've grown in this process. It's a new effort for us to do it specifically as we are, but when you can go into our system and see exactly where a student is, where they were, what the data is that supports their move, and what the exact instructional practices that we're going to be focusing on, and the skills that they're working on, it lets us confidently say that we're planning and preparing for each student at their specific level in the pre-K through five experience. The other one I chose to pull from our greater SEP is the shift in focus of common planning time. It's not that it's absent of data. It was more data-heavy in years prior, but at this point, it's grown to be more of a conversation about the units and the instruction that is to come. So it's a conversation with coaches, with the teachers, with myself, and we're taking a look at what's on the horizon, two weeks, four weeks out in terms of instruction, and really talking it through, finding areas that you think would possibly be a concern or a struggle for students, and really planning into that so that you're not finding yourself standing in front of the class or looking at the results of something that you just did and saying, I really wish that I had thought about that differently, that I had worded it differently, that I had let in with a different approach. This is an effort of the common planning time now, and it's really an effort across the district under the guide of Dr. Wilson Turner, so that we are spending that time upfront, thinking about what is down the road. And so I truly do believe that that has been a meaningful shift. The next one I pulled was the increase of classroom visits versus walkthroughs. Classroom visits have a little bit more process to them because of the back end writing up and summarizing, and the walkthrough lets you kind of pop into a classroom in a way you would kind of imagine if you just stopped into a class for five to ten minutes and kind of took stock of things, and it led to, you know, meaningful, ongoing conversation between myself and my coaches and my teachers. And I can tell you even at this point of the year, I've done forty to fifty official in terms of thinking about walkthroughs, visits to classrooms, and it leads directly back to my time sitting with coaches, their time working with coaching cycles and conversation with teachers, and moving along the different focuses and goals for our SEP in terms of all the content areas. And I pulled the last one being the one-to-one small group or large group work being done around instructional practices in math. And so we have at Montessori two new coaches which aren't just new to Montessori, but they're fresh from the classroom, which has been wonderful with Kim McDonough and Mary in person, who have, I feel taken, and the building has taken quickly to them in a way that although we're only five months into the year, I've seen so many instances where teachers are already demonstrating comfort with the one-to-one reach out to say, you know, I'd like to continue to grow with what you are here to share with me. And when you have those new coaches coming in, you never know how it's going to go. So it's a great credit to them and to the approach that they're taking to establish relationships that quickly. And with Kim McDonough in terms of math, it's great to go into the classroom and see those practices already being put into play that have been worked at the, I say, small group, one-to-one, large group level. So just a few pieces of a greater SEP that I wanted to highlight for you tonight. So there's a lot of different challenges that could have been picked, and kind of, I didn't want to go with the most obvious. I mean, the most overriding is the realities of COVID when we're, you know, in this case, three days back from the break and we're already making that shift, we recognize the impact that that makes and the work that we have to do and the pivoting that is done and the amazing efforts that our teachers take to continue the great Montessori experience remotely as much as possible. But in terms of things that we actually set a focus on doing well this year, and I wanted to go with departmentalization for grades three through five. We haven't done that before. We had a good sense of it, a good start with it, kind of by, really by, it wasn't by design more than last year when we had to move to different spacing, our fourth grade classroom was entirely in the gym. And so it was an interesting opportunity for Ms. Gugan to focus on math instruction, Ms. Karas to lead the ELA instruction. At the fifth grade level, they were doing a lot of this sort of thing, Ms. Bates and Ms. Walton over the last few years, but not officially. And then at third grade level, we've welcomed in a new teacher, Ms. O'Neill, and so Ms. O'Neill and Ms. Whalen have, again, they've split the effort of ELA and math. And so the benefits that that kind of approach definitely gives us is that you can purposefully plan with the coaches. So instead of even needing to work with a larger group, every time we have a common planning session, my two coaches, ELA and math, can work specifically with a teacher at a one-to-one level, really from where they are, but then also build those vertical teaming opportunities so those three teachers who focus on ELA and those three teachers who focus on math, who are responsible for the growth of our students, three through five, can get together and talk shop and really rise each other's tide. And so, and then the professional development that we can create geared directly for that group of teachers. You know, it's nice to be in conversations with individuals who are now into this enough to have been able to kind of contrast it versus anything they've done before and have people give positive feedback and highlight things that were, it's like, you know, getting a chance to just dive into truly deeply understand what it is to be a math teacher when prior to that they've been, you know, having to know all things wonders, well, all things envision, and all things FAS. It's a different reality, but I do think that we're starting to see the benefits of it. I believe our assessment data will show us that, and I do think that that's what the feedback is showing me, that people are seeing that the benefits are there, not that it's without its challenges, and there's definitely points where you can counter and say, well, but I wish this, but it definitely seems to be the right direction. I do feel that, honestly. So I'll go to the next slide after that. Some successes, there's always a lot of successes, but these, I thought, so far in the year, I can say I feel confident are the sort that we set out and we're going to meet our goals, and so we're successful to this point of the year. Using data and using that data to impact coaching and obviously with performance out in the backend, we've done a lot to take from what we've learned in the early going with the early data. We're about that point of the year where we're going to get a lot more. When we return, it's NWA season, it's another round of ECBM, there's Wonders assessments, but even starting off the first with the fall sessions and then the smaller incremental assessments with math benchmarks that come, you can pull out ECBM. ECBM is an assessment that helps us focus on students' ability to recognize letter sound, word reading, and passage reading as you progress through the grade levels, and with a goal of having eighty percent of our students be proficient by the year's end, I can already tell you that all of our grades are somewhere between sixty-three and eighty-three percent of our students being proficient. So we're either there or we're very, very confident in the fact that we will be there by the end of the year. So that's great because clearly, as anyone would know, you need to be able to read to access everything we are about, and so this indicator is one of the most meaningful and very encouraging. The adult and student equity teams, we know we've been working our own building at its pace through its own process of just the equity conversation, focusing the equity lens, letting equity be, as we've seen in many presentations, the plate that everything else sits on. And so it's exciting to watch our teachers growing, but arguably it's more exciting even to watch the students have those moments of clarity and even grow and broaden their sense of what equity is about. I'll tell you that my current equity group, that's fourth and fifth grade student-led, is focusing on equity as it relates to our special needs students because we're building with four classrooms of students with autism in a high needs level, and they're considering resources at our property, including the playground, which has nothing for those students. And so for them to recognize that and then be taking steps to try to get people on board with how to support changing that reality, those kind of pieces, it's exciting to see them growing in their understanding and not thinking so of themselves and really thinking more about what's not okay in their community and within their classroom and their school life. Attendance is another piece. It's always a point of conversation. We have traditionally wonderful attendance, but we do struggle with our six-one-three classrooms. Last year, we sat at close to sixty percent of the students that were chronically absent. By the end of the year, we got that down to into the forties. In the early part of this school year, we're sitting in the high twenties. So so far, there's some positive things happening, and so I'm encouraged by that. I'm hoping that we can hold that number or close to it for the rest of the year because it doesn't just happen. It's really on the backs and with the effort of an entire team of people that make that happen, and so I just, I thought that was worthy of bringing to focus. And then the last piece, this is just really a setting aside of a traditional approach to a faculty meeting. We have a once-a-month opportunity with all the staff after hours, and we have set that aside and moved instead towards Principal PD being really what it sounds like it ought to be, a specific focus on professionally developing the staff of the building, and that's really every different position. So at this point, when you go to our monthly professional development block of an hour, there's something for everyone, and so it's not just trying to one size fits all. We're trying to find things specifically for our teacher assistants to grow them in terms of reading instruction or the special education pieces that they have in our six-one-threes. There's been a lot of, it's almost a menu sort of thing, but you find something for you specifically, that's the goal. And so it allows us to really make progress on our SEP and as we monitor, making sure that you're seeing those SEP elements front and center throughout the entire year. So that shift, I think, has been a really successful one. The last screen here really is just kids being Montessori. I think you could say it like that. You know, we've got some traditional, very familiar things where you've got students harvesting gigantic sweet potatoes, you've got hands-on science happening, you've got students showing their own comfort with leading their class, and I couldn't, I wish I could have shown you a video of that math lesson that you're seeing up towards the top from Ms. Gugan's classroom. It was one of the best I've ever seen. And then you see traditional Montessori resources being used on the right, and up on the left side in the corner, you see teachers working within their grade level, and in this case, learning about FAS instructions. So just some great pictures from this year. I did create a video, and so that's the backend of my presentation. I hope you do enjoy that. If anyone has any questions or wonderings relative to Montessori or the year that is, I'd be happy to speak to them.
Mr. Powell, we love you, but unfortunately we don't have time to do that in this report. It was an excellent report, and I really appreciate your taking the time to be here with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Even if I can't say you're my principal anymore this year. Superintendent Adams?
Hi, good evening. I think we'll move on to the district update at this time, and starting with our vision, mission, and goals, which you've just heard from Mr. Powell, but just making sure that we are making our decisions in alignment with our vision, mission, and goals, and that we are keeping in the forefront of our minds why we are here every day to make those decisions for our students so that they can have the equitable opportunities, so that they can reach their potential. Tonight's discussion topics, we have three topics that I will go through with the help of Ms. McKenna. We will talk about employee absences and the tiered plan for coverage, COVID-19 updates, and middle school enrollment planning from our feeder alignment committee meeting last night. Staffing coverage for employee, I'm sorry, I'll back up. Staffing coverage for employee absences, since the start of the holiday break, we've had about three hundred and thirty-three new COVID cases reported through Wednesday with two hundred and forty-eight additional unvaccinated contacts, which also required us to quarantine. And so that brings us to a total of five hundred and eighty-one total individuals in quarantine as per the Albany County Department of Health. In addition, we've seen an unprecedented spike with our positive cases. You see the data before you, that Sunday through Monday, it was roughly one hundred and forty-four new positive cases, and Tuesday and Wednesday, one hundred and forty-three new positive cases, two hundred additional unvaccinated contacts which require quarantine. And on Wednesday, our employee absence rate was two hundred and fifty-nine employees were absent, and eighty percent of those absences affected our instructional staff, which left us with approximately three hundred and fifty class periods that we had to struggle to cover district-wide, and there were additional challenges in covering lunch periods and monitoring our hallways. Over the past few weeks prior to the break, I know Ms. McKenna worked with our ABSTA leadership teams to develop a tiered staffing plan so that we would not have to go virtual or shift to distance learning, but as you can see with these types of numbers, even with our tiered staffing plan, we were unable to absorb the absences and class coverages that we needed to. And at this time, I'll have Ms. McKenna go through the tiered staffing plan.
Thank you, Superintendent Adams. So first, I just want to just acknowledge that we do recognize the impact on our families and teaching and learning for our students when we do have to pivot to a distance learning day. And because we have a belief that students need to be in school, we did work with our Teachers Association, Laura Franz, and our administrators, and a couple of cabinet members to create a rotating schedule for teachers on special assignment, and also our district-level administrators. And as a result of that collaboration, we were able to develop what we're calling a tiered approach to providing students to access to teaching and learning when we have a high number of absences across non-instructional members and instructional staff. So with that and our planning, we created a Tier One, and so when we, Tier One would mean when we have substitute coverage, we have a number of teachers out and we don't have substitute staff to cover the buildings. We are then going to continue to follow our students' period-by-period schedule. We will utilize our school-level staff to cover for instructional staff that we can't accommodate through our substitute teaching staff. We will also have our student support staff supporting our hallway transitions, and then also, of course, our homeschool coordinators and our building-level leaders with an increased presence in our hallways specifically during transitions and lunch. And that's when we see an increase in staff absences with our safety and security staff. If we can accommodate students with our Tier One plan, we will then shift to our Tier Two plan, and what students will And what, students will still follow their period-by-period schedule. We will have all of our tier-one supports that I just mentioned. The difference between tier-one and tier-two is that we will call and activate our district-level teachers on special assignment to provide classroom coverage. And then we will also use our district leaders, if we need to, to provide classroom coverage, if the number of TOSs that we have in our buildings can't accommodate and stubborn, and cover all of the staff absences in the classroom. Should tier-one and tier-two not be effective, then we will then go to a tier-three plan when we just don't have the number of staff that we need for students to follow their period-by-period schedule. They will remain in a cohort model all day long. They will start in their first-period class, and they will remain there all day long. And then we will backfill with teachers that don't have a period-one into those classrooms that have an uncovered period-one, and they will remain with the, the students for the remainder of the day. Teachers will post assignments in their Google Classroom, and students will complete those assignments in their instructional cohort on, in their Google Classroom. We will utilize our building-level staff to provide student supervision for each cohort or pod. And then we will rotate staff to cover for teachers' thirty-minute duty-free lunch, and then a, and any contractual coverage that we need to provide, such as a prep period. There should be a tier-four in this plan now because we are actually in a tier-four plan, or a tier-four, because even with implementing a tier, a tier-three, we were not able, in our middle schools and the high school, to accommodate even a pod approach to teaching and learning for the day. And again, I'm just going to say that I know Superintendent Adams has said this time and time again, we do recognize the impact on our families and teaching and learning for our students, and we felt that having this tiered approach to cover classrooms when we just don't have the staff due to COVID-related absences and other illnesses that prevent teachers and, and staff from being in school, that this is a really important plan for us to execute. With that, I will turn it back over to you, Superintendent Adams.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. This information has been updated as of yesterday. We have a little bit of information from today, but as of yesterday, our total confirmed cases in the district, seven hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred and thirty-four of those cases are students, one thirty-five are faculty, and sixty-eight are staff. You can see the average daily cases. I think what is important to note is that today, the Albany County reported a record number of new daily cases, up to one thousand and ten for today. We are still encouraging our families to be prepared with backup plans in the event that we have to transition to distance learning. Unfortunately, this is something that we're going to have to be prepared for each and every day. As we move forward, the testing of our employees, we do partner with Quadrant Biosciences and SUNY Upstate Medical University for the saliva swab pool testing. We do not do the nasal swab. We have our reported status, and we did update this today. So even in my message that went out this morning, these numbers are a little bit off, but we will correct it on the website. We were previously at about forty percent of our faculty and staff that had not submitted proof of vaccination. As of close of business today, we are at thirty percent, thirty-point-four percent. So we are seeing that the proof of vaccination received, that number is increasing. We are very, very close to that seventy percent, and we are still encouraging our faculty and staff to provide us with that proof of vaccination. Our human resources staff will continue to follow up individually with our employees so that we can stay on top of how many of our faculty and staff members are vaccinated. We do have the mandatory testing for those who are unvaccinated, and we have a schedule that they will adhere to. But then, one of the things that we do as well, we have people, as you know, the data shows that there are people who are asymptomatic, but they do test positive. And so our faculty and staff are able to come in during the day. They do have to schedule an appointment, but they may be vaccinated. They may have shown us the proof of vaccination, but so that they, and they may be asymptomatic, but we still offer our faculty and staff the option so that they can come in and test, you know, should they just want that level of comfort of knowing that they are negative, or even the comfort of knowing that they're positive so that they know what to do, even though they are asymptomatic. And so our testing for employees through Friday, January fourteenth, nine AM to three PM, these are the daily locations for next week. This is also going to be where we offer the PCR test as well. So we are very excited about being able to offer that for our employees and for our students. We continue to push out our vaccine information because we strongly encourage anyone who is five years or older, if you are eligible and able, to please get vaccinated. And we make sure that that information is provided to our families and to our faculty and staff. Last night, I'll transition to the feeder alignment committee meeting that we had last night. It was an excellent, excellent meeting. We had great conversation. We are adding on to that next layer as we progress through this process. I would like to say welcome to President Savage, Secretary Shadar Shatur, and Member Almenyawe for joining the committee. These are our board representatives on the ad hoc committee with regard to the feeder alignment. So now these two have been joined together. We introduced Dr. Kenneth Robin to our team and to our committee. We were very, very excited to hear the information that he prepared for us. We did a review of the process and the research to date. We looked at a predictive model that Dr. Robin from University at Albany provided to us. One of the most compelling pieces was that in the model that he presented, we were able to compute academic attendance, behavioral, and risk, and risk scores for the grouping of our students, and look at how that will be incorporated moving forward. From that discussion, our committee members identified additional considerations that they wanted with regard to transportation, looking at the distance from home to the school versus the distance from the school, from the elementary school to the middle school. Also, the comparison of future draft scenarios to the current middle school enrollment pattern, looking at the number of changes that would be from the existing feeder alignment to what one of the proposed current, one of the proposed patterns might be. And then, of course, dual-language program is now a separate school, and some of the things that we looked at, it was still embedded within DCS. So the committee has asked that we pull that apart. And then the use of the district at-risk score, and the idea was brought forward that we look at that in terms of a histogram so that we could see how many at-risk students might be in one particular school, so that we can look at how we could equitably distribute resources for our various schools. The last component is our next steps. As we look for next week, on the thirteenth, there is a special board meeting with regard to the feeder alignment process, and we will continue that discussion. And then we will look to schedule our community forums, and then we'll have our Board of Education meeting on January twentieth. And then the twenty-first through the second, we have our community survey for additional opportunities for community feedback. And I do want to emphasize that the information that we have now is, is very small. And so we are committed to making sure that some of our communities that we have not heard from, that we are engaging our community schools, counselors, and coordinators, and working with our principals to ensure that we get representation in that survey process across the district. And then February third is another special board meeting for this particular item, and then February tenth is a regular board meeting. So at this time, I will open the floor for questions.
And as always, board colleagues, I'd like to start at the beginning of the presentation and try and group our questions about topics so that we can not bounce around too much. And I'm thinking, if it's okay with folks, that we'll start first with that, the three, the tiers one, two, and three on staffing, but not talk about our current situation, which is, as Dr. McKenna said, or Ms. McKenna said, our tier-four current situation. So I'd like you to hold your questions about what's happening right now until that second section, which is the COVID-19 updates, because I think that would be a good time to talk about that. So discussing our tier, tiered response to shortage of staffing. I see Board Member Crete, you have a hand up?
I do. And I just wanted to, I had a question that I forgot to ask last time about this, and it was, my understanding is that in tier-three, because the teachers, the students aren't in the classrooms with their particular teachers during the day, the teachers post the Google Classroom assignments for them to complete independently. Does that, and obviously, you could have to shift to this on kind of short notice. So would this mean the teachers always have to have prepared that Google Classroom-type asynchronous lesson that a student, that students can complete independently? Would that be like their normal lesson, or they just have that extra lesson just in case in the back?
That's a great, that's a great question. And so the answer is, is that our teachers are using Google Classroom on a regular basis to post assignments for students in their classroom. And so that's, you know, we, we're a one-to-one district, and they're using their Chromebooks even in, in the classroom. Certainly, there's a balance between the paper pencil, hands-on activities, and the Google Classroom. And so our kiddos are very familiar and accustomed to working in the Google Classroom, and our teachers regularly post all of their assignments into the Google Classroom regardless of whether we're in a distance learning environment or whether we're in person. So it's nothing above and beyond what they would already, already be doing.
So I guess I was confused because I, I was thinking, so teachers never really have days where they plan to lecture or have class discussions?
They absolutely do. There's a balance. And so, once that happens, then they would go in, and, you know, just like we would say, you know, we're passing out the hands-on activity, teachers would just say, okay, I want you to log into our Google Classroom. Your assignment has been posted. They also post their PowerPoint presentations or short videos to support, or other documents that may support the lesson for that day. But when we have to go into this cohort model environment, teachers would, would have that lesson posted that they would be having students do on that given day.
Okay, yeah, that was my only question, just making sure that this, that the teachers were not being double-burdened by doing the planning, they're doing, they're doing the planning and work for their, for their actual classes in addition to the supervision of the pod.
Correct.
Dr. Tatur?
Thank you. Most of the, this question is more, I mean, I, the board sort of knows the answer, but I wanted to bring the, put this question just so that the parents get to hear why. There, there, there's always a question among the, the community as to why does the school at the last minute pivot to, you know, any of these remote models, right? And I, I think it might be useful for them to know the challenges associated with identifying when those staff shortages happen. I mean, we know about it, but the public doesn't. And so I, I think if you could just give a brief snippet of the process, people would be more understanding of.
So I'll start, and if I missed anything, Ms. McKenna, as well as Dr. Wilson Turner can chime in as well. We have a system by which absences are put in called Absence Manager, and we monitor that. However, there is a timeframe that calls can go into Absence Manager so that we can monitor when we see an, an increased number of absences for a particular school as well as district-wide. And so based on that timing of when the phone calls come in, we have to respond. So I'll put it in perspective this way. In the evenings, typically, principals are watching for their schools, and, and Ms. McKenna and Dr. Wilson Turner are watching for the schools that they supervise throughout the evening as to how many absences may be coming in. In the morning, roughly, I think by five AM, we can see what that projected number is completely, and then we can make decisions. There are times when we see that escalation in the evening so that we can make that call, say, tonight, even after the board meeting, we could make that call. But sometimes, the calls don't come in, in a manner that we could notify our families ahead of time. We wouldn't be able to make that call until after we see what the absence rate would be at a particular building or throughout the district. Ms. McKenna and Dr. Wilson Turner, if there are any, if there's anything that I missed, please add to that.
I think you have covered it, Superintendent Adams.
I think the only thing I would tag on to what Dr. Tatur just said is that it does seem that the teachers know, right, the day before, because they're sending kids home with screenbook, with Chromebooks, they often know by two o'clock, it's possible, we're going to go virtual tomorrow, so I'm going to send you guys home with Chromebooks. But sometimes, the notification for families doesn't come out until the nighttime because you're waiting to be sure, right? And I think from a parent's perspective, an early warning system would be helpful so that as soon as those teachers get whatever notice they get that says, oh, you better make sure your kids have this Chromebooks, it would be helpful to send a notice home to parents to say, nothing is definite yet, but start, you know, implementing your own backup plans because you may need them, I think would be, would be helpful to parents, especially parents of elementary kids. Secondary kids do need some time, but it's the elementary kids where the, the lack of coverage, obviously, is really a deep problem. So I, I think that would be a nice additional step in the process if it could be inserted.
Thank you.
And then I had a question of my own about tier-three and attendance. So how will attendance be tracked on a tier-three day? And in particular, I'm thinking of students who, you know, could just as easily do their virtual school from their own house and maybe even do a better job at it if they happen to have a warm, safe, quiet place to be. Would that be considered attend, being in attendance at school if you participated virtually from home on a tier-three day?
So we haven't had that level of discussion, President Savage, but we do have the taking attendance process in place when students are in a cohort or a pod situation. And it would be no different than if a student went period by period. The assignments that students complete, would, we would have the expectation that they would go through their periods and complete those assignments, and then they would mark, be, be marked present for the entire day if they were in school for that day. But we have not discussed as a leadership team, should we have to go into a cohort or pod model for that given day if a student would be able to work remotely from home and get credit for not being actually physically in school? If we have to implement the tier, tier-three model, we will not know till that morning, so we would not be able to notify families that today, we're, we're shifting to a tier-three model where students will be in a cohort period-one model for the entire day. So really, it's an internal mechanism to provide access to our schools and to teaching and learning for that day in that, that method, and not necessarily an opportunity for kids to work in a virtual environment from home.
I hear what you're saying. I think that's a decision that has to be made before we can get to a situation where we actually implement this, because Albany is a very small city. No one had, is more than a eighteen-minute drive from Albany High, and probably most people are a six-minute drive from Albany High. So it's pretty easy for kids to get from school to home, and I think that's a question that's going to keep coming up unless you have a very clear and specific answer. Either you do have to be physically in the building, or your attendance counts, even if you're doing virtual school from home on a day that you'd be potted anyway. And I'm not saying to, trying to dictate the answer. I'm just saying, we really do need an answer.
Right. So, and, and I would say, as a team, we feel strongly that students need to be in school, and we have not discussed the option of students working remotely if we are in a pod day, so in, in a pod situation or a cohort model. So, you know, my, my answer on the board floor is, is that we are expecting students to be in school even when we're in a tier-three model, because we believe that the social, emotional, mental health, food services that we provide to our students, even in that model, is important for kids to, to have.
Dr. Almenyawe?
Do you guys hear me?
We sure do.
So regarding each of these tiers, do we have exact figures for the number of staff required for each level? So, I mean, do we have it laid out so that we know we need X? So, I mean, do we have it laid out so that we know we need X hall, X number of hall monitors for a Tier Two day? Or X number of instructional staff for a Tier Two day?
Right, so for, I'll answer the first part. For our hall, for the hall monitors, we need all of our hall monitors for Tier One and Tier Two. It's only when and if we have to shift to a Tier Three that we could have a reduced number of hall monitors in the hallways, because students aren't transitioning from period to period. There is a tipping point for each one of our middle schools and the high school, and it really depends on the number of staff that they have within the building that will tip them from a Tier One to a Tier Two, and then a Tier Two to a Tier Three. So, for example, at Myers Middle School, the tipping point is having 11 instructional staff out of the building on any given day. Because it's not just 11 staff, it's 11 staff times the nine periods in that day that we won't have coverage for. So it's, you know, it's cumulative over the course of the day that we have to provide coverage. So, you know, again, you know, I can, you know, give you the examples for each school if you would like, but again, for, you know, it's different for each building. So we do have that.
Yeah, it's just good to know that you guys have that detailed level info.
Yes, absolutely.
And that decisions are made based on that, that system. You know, the community should know that there is, you know, we're looking at the numbers consistently and that we have certain levels we have to meet or we're unable to provide the service appropriately.
Yeah, and, and we are doing that, and Cecily can, Dr. Wilson Turner can probably, will probably agree with me, it's the last thing that we do before we shut our computers down at night, and it's the first thing that we're doing at four o'clock in the morning, checking that attendance and, and making contact with our teachers on special assignment at the district level to support our schools so we don't have to pivot from, you know, one tier to another. We would love to stay in Tier One, but we know that we have to have, you know, Plan B and Plan C, which we do have.
Any other questions on this tiered system before we go on to talk about the COVID-19 slides, including our current Tier Four situation? Okay, then let's continue. Who has a question about anything COVID-19 related? And if, Tiny, if you can move the slides forward, I'd appreciate it. Questions? I'll ask one while people formulate. Superintendent Adams, I think you said this, but I just wanted to make sure, because it was a question I had when I reviewed the slides initially. Vaccinated staff can access the testing center? And we provide testing at no cost to vaccinated staff? They can be tested as much, as often as they reasonably want to?
In theory, yes, but typically it's once a week.
Okay, but so I, even though the slide says mandatory weekly testing for vaccinated employees, it's optional weekly testing for unvaccinated employees. They're welcome to come in and be tested if they, if they want to be? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
It's in the reverse. So if you recall, we have our, those who have not provided proof of vaccination.
Did I say it backwards?
Yes, we have a schedule that they come in for testing. If you are vaccinated, then we have the open time slot, you just have to set up an appointment to come in and you can opt into that testing. And, you know, in theory, and I'll say, I'll emphasize that, in theory, yes, they could come in like every day or every other day, but in practice, what we are seeing is that there are people who are opting to come in once a week or once every two weeks, just because they want to be sure.
Terrific, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Other questions about any of the COVID-19 slides? Other questions about our, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss someone?
This is Vicky, sorry. And I don't know if this is where this fits, but it was on the test kit distribution?
Go for it, let's do it.
And Superintendent, I'm going to apologize upfront that I, I feel like I should know the answer to this, but I don't. But in terms of the test kits that are distributed to our families, how many test kits or how many tests can be administered for each kit? Does that just take families through, say, possibly the month of January? You know, and especially if you have multiple children? I'm just trying to understand what that means and what it looks like.
So there are two tests per kit. And what we have done is, and, and I really give a lot of kudos to Ms. McKenna for really stepping up and putting this process in place over the holiday weekend. And I know I keep saying that because I think it's important to note all of the work that has gone behind the scenes to make sure that we can provide this for our families. We have labels so that we can make sure that each student, not just the family, each student, so if you have multiple children, each of your children have a test kit. And so those labels go on the test kit so that you at home, you have the information for your child that when you log in, if the child is positive, you can log in to put in the results in the portal for the Department of Health. That information is right there for you, you don't have to struggle and find it and look it up. So, you know, the thinking ahead of time was to make sure that we put those labels on the test kit so that parents have that information. And also in that distribution, we made sure that schools received enough test kits for anyone who did not pick up a kit, because here's the other thing, we knew that in doing this on Sunday, we knew that everyone might not be able to make it. So then we built in Monday as an organizational day to get the rest of those tests out to the schools. And then, so the schools could then complete that distribution beginning Tuesday and set up different times based on their community, what would be beneficial for their families to come in, which is why we emphasize check with your school, because every school is going to be different based on the needs of the community when you can come and pick up your test kit. I will address one of the things I know that was a concern, because it was a concern among superintendents, especially those of us who have a significant E and L population. And, you know, we have over 50 languages that are spoken in our district alone. I know Syracuse has some 80 to 89 languages that are spoken. What we have done is at the school site, not just at AIC, but at the school site, there is someone who can help walk you through the process so that you can understand those directions. I know over at Eagle Point, there's a QR code that you can go to to see those directions. We have a hyperlink so that you can see within our information, you can click on that hyperlink to see those instructions. For translation, we ask that you contact your school, because there's someone who is at the school who can assist with that. And what I observed at one of our schools was as parents were coming in, the process was kind of overarching, explained, and then they were given the information with regard to if you have questions as you were doing a test, here's where you can call, here's where you can get help. So that on-the-ground service, the translation, any assistance that our families need, all they have to do is contact their school, and the school can absolutely help them.
Questions? COVID-19 testing, vaccination? I guess I would appreciate an update on Albany County Department of Health, test to stay, 10 days versus five days. I know there's been so much going on in the news about all the changes and what's at the county level and what's at the state level, and I'm really just thinking it would be helpful to get an update on all of that.
At this time, with regard to, we are waiting for additional guidance. We had, the superintendents had a meeting this morning with the department, with the New York State Department of Education. We also had a meeting with the governor's office in looking for that consistent information, because we know even within the capital region, we have different DOHs that are supporting different practices within the school districts. And so we've reached out for information that could help make things more consistent. And so as soon as we receive that information, I will absolutely share it out.
It's anticipated that tomorrow's meeting will elucidate what they want us to change to.
Thank you, Dr. Sa.
Thank you. Okay.
So I have one comment.
Go ahead.
The home test kits, the Axis Bio company that makes these kits has a nice video on their front page of how the test to be done. If you could put that link on where our test information is, if people have, you know, once you see a video, sometimes it crosses the language barrier.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Anyone else on COVID-related topics or Board Member Creji?
I had just been going to ask if, because the state is distributing these tests, if they maybe were state resources for translations of instructions that we could, that we could utilize.
That was a question that we did ask, and they have to provide some additional information. They do have, I know that there's one or two languages that they do have it already, already translated in, but one of the things that we talked about on our call was that in our districts, most of us already have those services in our buildings to support our families. And, and so sometimes it's the one-to-one, I agree with Dr. Chitoura, that once you see the video, that you can easily follow that. And so we'll do that link. But as far as additional resources coming from the state with regard to translation, we did ask the question, but we're still waiting on that response.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we move on to feeder? Okay, questions or comments about where we are on feeder, what we did last night? Was that really only last night? That seems like at least a week ago. And/or what's upcoming?
Can I, I apologize, can I jump in quickly? I was a little slow in being able to get my camera and my microphone to come on related to the translation question?
Please join.
Great, in addition to everything that was noted, we did have the instructions that we've been providing to our families translated into 18 languages, and we've been distributing that via our E and L staff as well. And all of that information is available on our website, translatable into nearly 100 languages too. So those resources from the district are available for our E and L families as well.
Thank you very much. And now on to feeder. Anyone with questions or comments on feeder? I think the superintendent did a great job of summarizing the conversation last night. I think the, the questions will continue to become more and more refined as the model becomes more and more refined. One question I had about, was about the next steps, which we did not discuss last night. So if somebody could move us forward to the next step slides. Based on the conversation last night, I'm not sure how this schedule should, should or should not be adjusted. We had originally, when we set this schedule, anticipated that the committee would look at some scenarios as early as the first week in January, but instead we were in the defining the model stage last night. So I guess I hadn't really had a chance to think through, like, what would we do at the board meeting next Thursday? Would the committee, are we anticipating that the committee would have had a chance to review some scenarios? Are we just going to do an update on the process? What's the goal of the community forums? I would think we would want to hold on community forums until such time as we actually had some scenarios, and I don't feel like we're going to be ready by a week from today or tomorrow to be, to be presenting scenarios. So I'm just, I'm struggling with this, this schedule here.
I think that one of the things that we have to do after giving Dr. Robin an opportunity to kind of review our information, my plan is to speak with him tomorrow and to see where we are with what he's able to share out on the 13th, and then we would take it from there.
So do you anticipate committee's going to meet again before the 13th to review?
I don't, I don't think the committee would meet. I think we would be able to just kind of share out some information and have some discussion, and then we would have a committee meeting. But again, I would like to have an opportunity to follow up with him to see what, where he is with regard to the deliverables and the requests, and then tomorrow we can work through what that might need to look like.
Why don't you and I stay in touch so that we are making sure that we're making productive use of, of the time and thoughtful use of the time all the way through? Board member man?
That was going to be my question. Is there a possibility we will not have the board meeting next Thursday?
I think the superintendent and I are going to talk tomorrow after she talks to Dr. Robbins, and then we'll see where we're at.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
So for anybody who ever thinks that a board meeting is not things happening in real time, this is what happens, we're happening, it's all happening in real time, we're just trying to figure stuff out. So yes, I would say there's a possibility, but no decision will be made until we get a little farther down this process. Okay, anything else on feeder? I know many of my board colleagues, even if they aren't on the ad hoc committee, were listening in virtually, so we appreciate everybody paying close attention to that since it's such an important factor for the next, probably 10 years for our district. And hello, Zariah.
Hi.
All right, anything else? If not, I think that we will call that the end of the district update. Is that okay? Right, end of the district update. And now I just need to get back to my agenda here so I don't make a mistake. That brings us to our public comment period. And we do always accept comment from the public even when there is no in-person meeting. We always accept community comment, we really appreciate community comment. It really influences us and we, we learn a lot from the questions that people ask. Per our longstanding policy, the board sets aside up to 30 minutes of each meeting to hear from district residents, parents, students, and other members of our community. We do have one voicemail comment tonight, and I don't know, Mr. Baker, are you prepared to do that voicemail comment first? Is that okay?
I am, and it's coming up right now.
All right, terrific, thank you.
Yes, my name is Tom Anthony, I live in the city of Albany, I have two boys that attend New Scotland Ave Elementary, and I want to discuss my displeasure of closing the school district of the city of Albany, which is very mind-boggling. The science doesn't back anything up like that. I think the school district has completely failed our children and continued to do it. And I really do believe that the school district should pay residents that belong to the school district tuition fees to send them to other schools where they're in school. All right, thank you.
Okay, in addition to the one voicemail comment, we received nine written comments, which we are going to read now. We really do our very best to get people's names right. So if anyone misspeaks and says a name, pronounces a name incorrectly, we'd appreciate it if you'd let us know by email. We also do note that we do not allow comment on individual staff members or individual students. We think it's an important part of their due process and the respect that they're entitled to, that people's names not be mentioned on the public record without proper due process. So board members are going to substitute alternative words if individual names are mentioned. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Board Member Creji, if you're ready to read, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, I am. The first, the first message is from, and I apologize if I pronounce her name wrong, Kashawa Armstrong. Good morning, I have three children who attend three different schools, and one which is vaccinated, the other two aren't. One of them I will be taking to get vaccinated because she has no choice, while the other is a 16-year-old male whom I can't force to be vaccinated. I would like to know, can we, can we have an option for virtual learning as the numbers are spiking higher and higher by the days? My 16-year-old has asthma, hasn't been treated for it in a couple of years, but I, as his parent, are afraid for him to get sick. I have been keeping him home since school has returned, but will be penalized. I have been encouraging him to stay on top of, to stay on top of his work, which I haven't had any complaints about his assignments, just his attendance. I would at least like the option to keep him home. Also, with the numbers rising, the teachers and other school personnel are going to become sick and unable to do their jobs, which leaves everyone unsafe. If everyone was virtual two or three weeks, I think the numbers would at least go down, the kids will be home, and the parents who have to go out and work should be taking precautions on protecting their families. Something needs to be done and soon. Thank you for your time. The next message is from Matthew Shoup. It is ridiculous for pre-K to have a virtual day on December 22nd, the day before a break, due to bus staffing shortages, as no pre-K students are eligible for the bus. It looks It looks more like the school district is just trying to make any excuse to be virtual and not deal with students in the building, even when that makes it difficult for students to learn, parents to work, and teachers to educate. The third message is from Talisha Latimer. And it is, how come if a parent chooses to homeschool at this time in a pandemic, we can't, we cannot? The next message, and I'm going to try my best with this name, is from Michaela Cola Giovanni. She says, hello. I would like to address the board regarding the pool at Myers Middle School. My son is a Hackett Middle School eighth grader and member of the modified swim team. There have been consistent issues with the Myers Pool that seem to not be taken seriously by administrators at the building. Practices have been continuously canceled, oftentimes at the last minute, as kids are arriving to practice. This has made it difficult for the kids to practice on a regular basis. I feel it is important this be addressed. The kids have an excellent coach and a lot of potential, but due to issues with the pool, they are not getting a chance to partake in the sport they love. They have seventh and eighth graders practicing from 5:30 to 7:30 at night at Albany High School to get any practice in so that they can participate in meets, which puts a hardship on families and has caused some kids to leave the program. It's not fair to the kids and administrators need to address it. If, if modified swim is going to be offered, the district needs to provide the proper maintenance to the pool that is required for them to practice. This issue has been largely ignored and not taken seriously up to this point, which is why I'm reaching out to the board. I know the athletic director and coach have made attempts to address it, but they have not been successful. I would appreciate it if the board could possibly look into this matter. Sincerely, Michaela Cola Giovanni. And the next message, final, my final message is from Mark Adam. Dear Board of Education, my name is Mark Adam and I am the parent of a pre-K student at Albany School of Humanities. I am very disappointed in Albany's decision to close schools and switch to virtual learning through Martin Luther King Day. While I understand COVID cases have been increasing over the holiday break, virtual learning is not an adequate replacement for in-person learning, especially for a four-year-old child. We all know that schools are one of the safest places for children due to the strict health and safety procedures such as mandatory face masks, social distancing, COVID testing programs, et cetera. I think Albany City Schools have done a great job in this respect. Thus, I would argue, students and others will be less safe now that they are at home and out in the community for the next 12 days where the same rules are not being enforced. I am aware of the challenges facing school districts and specifically school leaders. I work at a local school district and I am involved in the meetings and discussions on how to navigate this ongoing pandemic. I firmly believe that we should be doing everything possible to preserve in-person learning for our children. Unfortunately, our children continue to bear the burden of this pandemic. Schools should be the last thing that are closed. Everyone in my household had COVID over the holiday break. Because my wife and I are fully vaccinated and boosted, we had mild colds with runny noses. My son also tested positive and has, thankfully, not experienced any symptoms. His last day at school was December 21st and he was scheduled to return from isolation tomorrow. Because of the switch to virtual learning, he will go four weeks without being in a classroom. This is unacceptable. My wife and I have lived in the city of Albany for 10 years and we chose to buy our current home because it is in Albany. We love this city and appreciate what the school district offers our child. However, I am feeling let down by our school district at this moment. I know that the district will not reverse yesterday's decision, but I am pleading with you to A, return all students to in-person learning on Tuesday, January 18th, and B, do not switch to virtual learning again. Our kids need to be in school. Sincerely, Mark Adam. And those are, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much, Board Member Crete. Uh, Board Member Smith, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you now and I am also just going to note that one of the ones that was, uh, originally provided to you when I said you had four is actually the same person who left the voicemail. So if you can just pass over that one, since we did get a chance to hear from him already.
Thank you, Madam President. And I might have to ask you to remind me of the name of that individual as I was pulling up my, I'm sorry?
Mr. Anthony is the one that, that left the voicemail.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Okay. My first, um, uh, comment is from Meredith Wilson, who writes, good afternoon. My daughter is in the eighth grade at Myers Middle School and takes French class. As you know, Mrs. Philip Pon- Pony retired and yesterday was her last day. Today, my daughter said that they had a hall monitor in the room and watched a movie. This obviously not being, uh, this obviously not being recited or learning anything. I would like to know what the plan is going forward, including the timeline that the district will be providing a teacher who is capable of teaching French language. If this reaches you in a timely manner, please include in public comment tonight's board meeting. Regards, Meredith Wilson. Okay. And my second one is from Kimberly, and I apologize, Ruquel, I'm not sure that's correct, uh, who writes, dear Superintendent Adams and board members, I know that it must seem like I am always writing and complaining. While I am still extremely concerned about the status of the feeder alignment patterns, I understand that the committee and district is still working on new scenarios and intends to use community engagement. So I'll simply say, thank you for your continued effort on it and take a break from writing on that topic this month. My current concern is the ongoing problems and lack of maintenance with Myers Pool. The modified swim team has continuously had practices canceled or shifted to alternate times and locations to accommodate the fact that the Myers Pool has clearly been neglected and not properly maintained. It's my understanding that the maintenance of the pool would be handled by the head janitor, which is a currently vacant position at Myers. There are regulations regarding certifications for the operator and reporting that is required by the State Department of Health. If the person responsible is not employed at the moment, how are parents and students expected to believe that the proper chemical levels are being upheld and that the pool is overall safe to use? I do not want to swim, practice, or, or have meets to be canceled. I appreciate the efforts that the athletics department and coaches have expended to find alternate sites to use. However, the only other site available is at the high school, which means scheduling around the varsity schedule. This leaves modified with the option to practice during dinner hours and when students would normally be doing homework and trying to get to bed at a decent time. Our students need and deserve to have a schedule that provides them to find a balance between school, work, sports, and life. Having to constantly change the practice schedule isn't fair to them or the coaches. I'm asking that more attention is given to the pool maintenance so that the next Anna Flanders, who is just starting out in his or her swim career, won't be discouraged and choose to quit. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Mr. Anthony, I'll go over that one. Okay. And my next is from Laura Duran, she, who writes, I'm a parent of two district children. During the December 16th board meeting, board members and senior administrators on the facilities committee asserted that our district doesn't have enough non-binary students to justify a dedicated gender-neutral locker room in the redesign of athletic facilities at Albany High. I was puzzled as to how committee members know we have so few non-binary, non-binary students when there is no way for students to indicate that on district forums. Did anyone on the facilities committee reach out to the nurses and teachers who work daily with gender-diverse students? It doesn't appear so. The committee members' statements were alarmingly out of touch with our student population. The American Academy of Pediatric Study on the Prevalence of Gender-Diverse Youth in an Urban School District surveyed 3,168 students from Pittsburgh Public High Schools about their gender identity. More than 9% of students claimed gender diversity, nearly 300 students. Albany demographics are likely not so different. However, even if our district only had a handful of non-binary students, they would still have the right to a safe space to change for gym and sports. Board members and administrators should also be aware that not all our students who have a non-binary identity are comfortable coming out on a school, uh, on a school form and those students are still entitled to equal rights at school. Regarding the current plan to give non-binary students the option to use the refree rooms, will those rooms be locked so that students can only access that space by outing themselves as they attempt to access a space designated for others? The district should not put students in such a difficult position. Dedicated gender-neutral locker rooms provide safety from verbal and physical harassment, not only to non-binary students, but any student who feels unsafe in a single-gender locker room. Please do the right thing for vulnerable students in your care. Do not send them the message that they are in an afterthought by making them squeeze into a space designated for others. Finally, I urge the district to reach out to GLSEN, G-L-S-E-N, to provide training for senior administrators and the board on how to support gender-diverse youth, who are, are at a higher risk of emotional and physical harms when schools do not create a supportive, affirming environment. Okay. And I think that is all for me.
Thank you very much for reading, uh, both of you. And that does bring us to the end of our, uh, public comment period. As I said before, we really do appreciate all of the work that, uh, members of the community do when they put those comments together and we do find them informative and helpful. We now move to the part of our meeting that we call routine consent. During this portion of the meeting, we approve routine matters for the district. These include items like contracts, field trips, personnel matters, and the like. Each board member reviews each item carefully, but we vote on them as a group with no discussion. That allows us to use our meeting time more efficiently. Nonetheless, each board member has the option to set aside any routine consent item in order to require a separate discussion and a separate vote on that item. With that introduction, may I have a motion to adopt the routine consent agenda? Motion by Board Member Mann. Second, Board Member Wilson, are there any set asides? I think Board Member Mann is, has a set aside. She just needs to find her mute button.
I do have a set aside and I'm just looking here. I, it's the, um, the Albany Symphony Orchestra?
I'm sorry. Could you speak more directly into your microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
My set aside is number 20, Albany Symphony Orchestra.
Number 20, Albany Symphony Orchestra. Any other set asides? All in favor of adopting the routine consent agenda, last item number 20, Albany Symphony Orchestra? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That is unanimous. And now a motion to adopt number 20, Albany Symphony Orchestra. Can I get a motion? Board Member Wilson and a second, Board Member Smith. Is there any discussion? Board Member Mann?
Just the comment. I mean, we have a gym right here in the city of Albany. We have the Albany Symphony.
And, Miss, Miss Mann? Really can't hear you.
Yeah.
New computer. So I just wanted to say, is that better?
Little bit.
Okay, so, uh, my comment is quick. I just appreciate that district, the Symphony Orchestra are working together. Tremendous opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Has definitely been a wonderful partner to us, um, in various efforts over the years. So agree, we're very lucky to have such a quality symphony program in our, um, small city. So it's terrific. All in favor of a da- oh, any further discussion? All in favor? And that is unanimous. And that brings us to the end of the routine consent agenda and on to our first discussion item, which is the data assessment and technology division update. Typically, we front-load our, our agenda with all of our action items. We would not expect to take another action tonight, although we sometimes do, we're not prevented from, but we do not have an intent to take another action tonight at this time. With that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you so very much, uh, President Savage, members of the board. At this time, we have our division update from the Office of Assessment, Accountability and Technology Innovation, led by Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Kent Baker. And so I will turn it over to him to share the updates with regard to his division. Mr. Baker?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Adams and members of the board, for this opportunity to report to you about the activities within my division. And I have to apologize upfront, literally right before I was introduced, I experienced a horrible tickle in my throat, so my voice is, uh, weaker than normal. So, uh, bear with me, please.
Do you need a minute to get yourself some water? There's no, no rush.
I think I will, uh, improve.
Okay.
As we move along, thank you very much for that. As with, uh, all of the divisions in the district, we align everything we do with the district vision and mission. And further, uh, we feed that mission and vision into our division goals. And while primarily statutory as goals, there are fluid objectives on a year-to-year basis that fall within, um, within these goals. And they become the focus of the work for our foreseeable future on a year-to-year basis. As far as the division composition and structure is concerned, we have a relatively, uh, stable group of folks with the welcomed addition, I'll note here in that top row of instructional staffing. I'm very pleased to announce that we now have three full-time technology coaches onboard under my direct supervision. And we have really focused quite heavily in the last 18 months in particular on, as you all know, um, more purely integrating technology into all of our instructional components. We also have, as I continue to point out, three distinct departments within this division. Uh, one of those being the technology support realm that is led by Mr. John Wild. And unfortunately, Mr. Wild is unable to be here this evening. However, he was very instrumental in creating the presentation and we will carry on in his stead. The staffing in his department is, uh, predominantly tech support, desktop support specialists with some specialized positions who perform a higher-level enterprise management. And of course, Ms. Patricia Wolf, who is joining us this evening and will partner with me in a few slides. Uh, Ms. Wolf leads a very small but mighty team of folks who are really the, the brains behind all of the, uh, information systems that we manage and that we use to present, um, data models and, uh, other analysis tools across, uh, the spectrum. And we do still retain ownership of all the mechanics of administration of state, local, and federal assessments and that work is led by Ms. Shayna Barber. Before I get into the next couple of slides of by the numbers, just be aware that I know we've packed an awful lot into these slides and in the interest of time, we're not going to dive too deeply into these because I'm quite confident that the board membership will ask questions when they have them. And certainly if you, um, would like anything else to be expounded upon in a BOE update, I'm very happy to provide more information through that vehicle as well. So this first slide really just sets the stage for what I'll consider our, our infrastructure, our enterprise backbone in the sense that it's the, the technology systems and items that we use on a daily basis and that we manage as a division. And just on the left, we are up to about 27,000-ish managed assets. And I'm very deliberate about that term managed because all of these things require support and configuration. They are not dumb devices. They all grab IP addresses and they require policies, management, and so on. In the right, top right, uh, the one thing I do want to point out is when we look at how success is measured, the gold standard in, in this domain would be 99.99%. For the things we can control and that we have complete ownership of, we do have a network uptime and a district systems uptime that exceed 99%. We're clearly not at 100%, but I do like to point out when you look at typical sector measurement metrics, things are incremental and we, we accept successes in the, sometimes in the teens. And, and we, we like gradual growth and trajectory that shows improvement. In my world, the expectation is everything works all the time exactly how someone wants it. So it's a higher standard and we do our best to reach it and we are as close as I think we can possibly be. And the bottom right, we just look at those systems that are behind everything we do, 42 instructional, 18 operational, and very tightly integrated, exchanging information seamlessly on a daily basis. And the back, the dashboards you'll hear a little bit more about have really become a part of the fabric of all the work as well. Really quickly, help desk, I'll just point out that we have cataloged here about 5,700 requests from September through December. That comes from 30,000 phone calls year-to-date, so July through December, about 30,000 phone calls. And this help desk, um, counter here just tracks what we've been able to actually enter in. So sometimes things will be dispatched on a phone call and the technician doesn't actually enter this into the, the ticketing system. So what you're seeing here is actually light if we looked at what we really provide in terms of support on a daily basis. The other thing I want to note quickly is that 40-hour resolution time is probably closer to 30. Uh, this also, this 40 hours also includes some, let's call it latent, uh, record-keeping where people do not close tickets out in a timely fashion, so they people do not close tickets out in a timely fashion, so they live on an extended open period for longer than they're actually open. And Ms. Wolf will talk about some of these items.
Good evening, members of the board. This is really a summary of our Clever data. Clever is an intermediary software that links to our various instructional products. You can think of it as a landing page. There are two things to point out on this page. One is that 92% of the students are using Clever and launching it into the various software products despite that we are primarily in person. And the second is, you see on the graphic there for teachers, that's not just teachers, that is teachers, admin, and support staff. So if you're just looking at teachers and admin, you're around the 93% for teachers, for all staff as well. Ms. Baker.
Email is the official district communication tool, and it's obviously a business platform for us. Just looking at typical monthly traffic, it's in the millions. It's almost 3 million mail items per month. What's really important here is we are getting great efficiency right now from our new email gateway system, which is more than just a mitigation and protection system, it's also a training platform. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, too. The top-left graphic looks at rejections that include user action. The bottom-left is those rejections from a system automated. In other words, we give users the opportunity to parse out what they think is malicious or spam, whereas we also have rules in place that allow the system automatically to mitigate and block mail items that potentially would deliver a malicious payload. And then the rest of the objects really, on the right side, just point out average monthly traffic overall. And for analysts who look on the left side first and look at the means at the bottom and say, "Well, you're showing me a total mail volume of about 1.2 million. Now on the right, you're showing me 2.7 million." What's really interesting is if you carry this chart out over a year, so the top-right is average-based over a year per month, we do a lot more volume of mail in the middle to second part of the year. Can't explain why that is, but we do a lot more volume of mail traffic in the last four or five months of school. Cybersecurity is quintessentially important. We can have all the greatest tools and processes in the world, but if we don't have a safe and secure environment, and we're not protecting users and their data, then we're failing. So we all understand physical security is a shared responsibility, and we have a lot of systems in place at the district that help us to monitor and manage those things. When it comes to cybersecurity, we have to rely heavily on a few tools. And so the mail system that we have allows us to really drill down and understand what people are doing in terms of interacting with mail. Mail is the main gateway. Those numbers on the prior slides show you how much mail we receive and how much is potentially malicious. We do, I think, a really good job of securing our perimeter in terms of cybersecurity, so the user risk is really where we're focused now. I'm really happy to report that as of today, you can see in the top-left, that was on December 27th, as of today, we've moved to a B grade overall. And the really important part still remains that our human error piece is at an A. So obviously, our next steps are to work on those engagement knowledge and sentiment pieces, and they will be integrated into larger strategic campaigns. The middle just shows you how we have the ability really to track down into employee groups, employee, individual employees as needed, and align them with training resources that are integrated into the mail delivery that can help them to understand and be more aware of what they're interacting with. And the graphic on the right just shows you how, over the course of just two campaigns of phishing attempts, constructed phishing attempts, our click rate has gone down significantly. And so that trajectory is really solid, and we're very pleased with the results so far of those efforts.
This next slide is our internet usage and management. The first thing I want to call your attention to is the web traffic over the past two weeks. And what you'll notice is that we've had 1.3 million websites blocked, and I think that speaks to how we're always protecting and content filtering, no matter what the location of the student is. Additionally, I think it's important to note, if you look at student activity, that students are primarily engaged in educational activities during the week, majority of the time. And this all just kind of illustrates that we really truly are a 24/7 operation that we support. And you can see that no matter day or night, no matter what time, people are online using our devices.
So the Google environment still plays a prominent role in instruction and collaboration professionally. This just goes to show that even though we are back in person, these tools now have become part of the toolkit for our staff, and we couldn't be more pleased with that. And if you look carefully at some of these graphs, what you'll find is that, yes, there are correlated spikes when we have shifts to virtual or remote learning. You would see some of these spikes around that last week before the break, for instance, where, you know, the activity in classrooms and posts and file shares all show that. We're slowly building toward a more robust use of Office 365 as our business or operational backbone. And we don't have quite as many users, but 1,000 unique Office daily active users represents about half of our staff, which is solid. Clearly, though, the most heavily used platform within the O365 suite is, in fact, Teams. So on the right, what you'll see there is as a total of 1,400 or so meetings in total. We've had 11,000 chat messages exchanged within those and 40,000 screen shares. And again, be aware that that 1,400 meetings can also include recurring meetings. For instance, this BOE meeting, our admin meeting is a standing meeting. So you may have one instance of a meeting with several iterations, which is why you can have numbers that are much larger than that 1,400 might lead you to believe. What you'll also see in that middle section really quickly is that people are starting to use the Office 365 space to store documents, but the collaboration rate isn't nearly as high as it is in Google, although it's getting there.
Now I'm going to discuss more in depth the data side of the house. You can see represented on the previous slides how our universe of data and technology is ever-growing in size and complexity. For discussion tonight, we have divided the areas covered by our department into four large sectors to encapsulate the work that we do throughout the district. We do support all facets of planning, operation, and reporting, including state reporting. Through this discussion, I'll demonstrate how they link to our vision and mission as a division, as well as how our department goals support district initiatives. I'm going to start by mentioning the dashboards in general, as they've become the basis of a common language and understanding that aids our inter-district communication and collaboration through a set of common business roles. The main purpose of these dashboards is to assess where students are in the moment, either individually or as a group, for targeted interventions, as well as where we are in our accountability picture as the year progresses. They are available essentially all areas of operation, and they also give the ability to take deeper dives and enhance filtering. You're going to see examples listed for dashboards through the different sectors that I have listed on the screen here. They've continued to grow in breadth and depth as our user base expands. Previously, our user base consisted mostly of admin users and has now expanded to include support staff. We are in the beginning stages of rolling out to teachers where they can see the similar types of information for just their students. This user base expansion supports our district instructional leadership tenant and can assist in conversations with teachers and analyzing student data to help strengthen their instruction. This growth and change is really the result of all the feedback that we receive, and we're always asking for it, so we continuously improve and develop the dashboards for what people need. We feel our primary mission as a department is to make the information easily accessible with meaningful views, so they can spend their time analyzing and working on actionable items rather than compiling data. So as an example, looking under the progress monitoring area, one dashboard of focus for this school year is to build a more robust multi-tiered support services system to help monitor the measure of impact of interventions and the fidelity of implementation in support of the district early warning intervention and monitoring tenant. This is an area where there was a lot of manual data collection and collation, leaving less time for impact analysis. And so now this development of dashboards is really alleviating most of those manual pieces and allowing more time for staff to focus on the intervention effectiveness. As I move on to program and initiative support, you can see from the items that are listed there that the dashboards cover a vast expanse of important areas, and many of these feed the data into our state reporting system for accountability. It's through the dashboards that we build awareness of the data for building admin and program owners to review and own their own data sets, ensuring correctness and understanding of the data to make informed decisions. We stress that we do not own the data, that we just facilitate accessibility to the data. It is only through many sets of eyes looking at the data and programmatic ownership that we can all get better. And we feel our role as a department is to really kind of help people become from data consumers to develop more into more data analysts. The next area is the data interoperability and exchange. You can kind of think of this as really the foundation of how operational data is collected, digested, and presented into dashboard views. Mr. Baker talked about all the integrations that we've had on the first slide. As mentioned, we have many operational integrations that the data is constantly being moved back and forth between these different systems and with ever-growing complexity, which also, you know, translates into support. One example of this is our custom-built security scanning system that we use at the secondary level. This system is crucial in building safety, and it is integrated in our student management system to tell us where a student, you know, do they belong in a building? What class should they be in? Are they skipping class? It has also become the foundation of COVID contact tracing by using the scan status and student schedule. And lastly, this brings me to the operational planning and support. As I said in the beginning, that we support every facet of planning, operations, and reporting, and are often behind the scenes. I want to emphasize that every tool, dashboard view that we create to help keep, to keep end-users with the data at their fingertips, has inadvertently resulted in additional complexity, support, and training needs. Additionally, majority of these projects, data requests or any analysis that people need, requires assistance from us to varying degrees, oftentimes with immediate need. Thank you.
So in the technology realm, we tend to group these into four domains. First of all, the tech-infused learning spaces, and this is not just the tangible equipment and environment itself, but it's the, every component of instructional design and the application of that design in those teaching and learning interactions and transactions. And so I have to give all the credit in terms of progress here to those coaches that I've mentioned already. I cannot speak more highly about a group of individuals at every level, and they are really truly moving the needle for us in working with their peers to understand how to purely integrate, how to take technology and leverage it towards your true goal, as opposed to figure out what to do with a piece of technology. But that's a story for another time. In terms of infrastructure, these are things that no one sees, cares about, and that's fine, I get it, but they are critically important, so we care very much about them. And I'll just say really quickly that we are focused heavily on scalability, agility, and continuity, essentially making sure that we can, we can be very responsive, very secure in terms of delivering a user experience to everyone that is stable, speedy, and secure. Cybersecurity, moving into that, really is, it's so much about the user disposition, as I've talked about before. So we control everything we possibly can from the physical side, and so we're really strong at our edge inside our network. I think we, we have done everything we possibly can to account for all of those potential vulnerabilities inside. And, you know, when it comes to understanding what's going on on a daily basis, we do rely on a lot of sophisticated tools to help us pull in logs, parse out activity and patterns, get that network visibility, and do some threat hunting. And obviously, what we, at the root of what we do is customer support. That is probably the foundation overall. And so I feel truly that the greatest service and value we can provide for anyone is empowerment, and we're really turning toward that as a true goal from the help desk perspective. We're building out, you know, self-help library that's full of multimodal materials. We're trying to help people become more confident in taking action on their own, try to understand things. There's always that potential for support requests to bleed in to do it for me. It's the old teach a man to fish conundrum that we battle. And we really think we are starting to turn the corner in terms of improving those efficiencies for all of our users. So challenges and opportunities, we all have them. Top-left for us, a big one is adoptions. People, program offices, buildings, take on systems that are very attractive, serve a purpose, and presented in idyllic scenarios to them. And it's typically the data foundations and the technology pieces that are glossed over. And lo and behold, it's very challenging to step into a situation where a system or an application requires a great deal of configuration and integration after the fact. And so what we try to do is, like I said, there is challenges and opportunities. With every challenge, we find an opportunity. And so what we are working toward right now is a much more codified software request system and modified contracts workflow, because that's the gateway. Nothing can be onboarded in the district without going through a review and approval in terms of its value to the organization, instructionally, operationally, and then the contract piece. So if we get involved at those points, then we're able to become partners in that onboarding, and it helps us all to be better and to get more use out of the tool. Growth of burden in the bottom right, it's, we've taken on a lot, a lot of actual devices, a lot more systems, and a lot more people doing a lot more with those systems and devices. And so at that scope and scale, we again see opportunity, and you're going to start to see a pattern here, but that software request and adoption process, that development of self-help, self-help resources library, and where we can decentralize management. We're starting with devices. The Chromebooks are a great example. It's impossible for a technical staff of nine members to be responsible for the management, the day-to-day management of devices on a student basis. So buildings have taken on and done a wonderful job of taking on that one-to-one management kind of responsibility, along with assistance from us. Top-right, the hidden support, we could really talk about this forever. It's the things that aren't part of those goals I talked about early on, our division goals, some of our initiatives, and the roadmap stuff you'll see on the next slide. It's things that other people bring to us, often in the 11th hour. And so those things often take up a great deal of time and thought and resources, and it's not just about the thing itself. It often gets into thinking through the application of that platform or tool and how it can be configured, and the ownership part of it, and the potential integrations down the road. So again, that software request and adoption. Starting to use the help desk as sole source, we're very guilty, these individuals in this division, of picking up, you know, phone calls from folks and helping them in the moment, not cataloging it ourselves, not being able to identify trends and patterns. That would be very useful for us, too, when we look at aligning resources down the road. So if we all start to use the help desk as a sole source, we can, I think, find efficiency there. And of course, partnerships, it's like anything else, relationships, relationships. So partnerships with our program offices will also help us to be part of some of the projects and initiatives that divisions are even thinking about. And lastly, the programmatic ownership, this has been on, I think, every, every presentation I've brought to the board since I've been here. And it really is truly about organizational health overall. When program offices or buildings want to use platforms that have great value, they really have to understand them at every level and own them, because it's the only way you realize that maximum potential benefit from that system. It's also the only way you understand the information that's contained within it and make it actionable. And in a lot of ways, it requires, you know, a level of management often that someone in my staff is going to be able to provide. And oft, you know, it's often the case that we have no idea what this system is, I've never heard of it. And I love that people believe that we are all-knowing and have a mastery of every single product that's out there, but we do not. And so we often know a lot less about it than they may, and we've never even logged into it. So... So programmatic ownership has the same opportunities as most of those other pain points that we have, software requests, partnerships, and I think data governance in this particular case will also be a great benefit to efficiency. So where are we headed? Cybersecurity, where we will continue to work that two-pronged approach of dealing with the things we can control inside, the the physical hardening of our edge and core, but also aligning with the NIST framework, looking at our incident responses because it's not a if, it's when we're going to have to respond to an incident. And we really want to get into full-cycle, scheduled tabletop exercises to make sure we are agile as a system, and it's not that's not about us, that's about the organization, which is really important.
I mentioned teacher dashboards when I was talking about the data side. So we are in the process now of, you know, rolling that out at the secondary level. We'd like to expand that throughout all levels and, you know, develop them to meet the needs of teachers as best we can. It gives teachers access to the same types of analysis, especially like the at-risk pieces that we use. And then there's also the possibility of public-facing dashboards at aggregate with aggregate data, so there's not any student-level data in there, but, you know, just being able to present some statistics in an easy format for people to access. And then another thing on our roadmap is the paperless system. As we drive to a more paperless environment, we push to evolve to a completely digitized student record as part. We're looking to expand, looking at a comprehensive student-based data storage system that can be integrated with whatever system we need. So there's one single point of access with versioning, so there's only one copy of something. So that's really what we're looking to do.
Blended learning is a district initiative, and again, it's it's truly about instructional design and delivery as much as technology, but this is where I have to extend my absolute gratitude for those coaches that we have working. These are the folks who are working, again, before they were actually coaches, working with their peers. And so the one real, I guess, achievement this past year was us launching this academy approach to PD over the summer, and we had tremendous positive feedback from that. So we're looking at how to integrate that academy approach during the school year, maybe on shutdown weeks, long weekends. You'd be surprised the number of people who may be willing to come in for an entire day because of the benefit of that model. So blended learning as a system is a, I think, a roadmap item for for all of our divisions. And then lastly, that culture of shared responsibility, meaning that we all have a hand because technology is so pervasive and the use of data is so pervasive across this system, it's a shared responsibility. It's the only way as a as an organization that we can move things truly forward with a sense of culture around it. And so we are really trying to shepherd that work along, and I mentioned a data governance committee, which will be a real benefit to us in in advancing network. And you'll notice, you know, some of the the quotes and and other research items on the on the slide. That's just so people understand that our division is as research-based as any other in the in the district. We don't, we aren't just reactive, we don't just respond to things and decide, let's, hey, let's do this for fun. We pay close attention to industry standards, best practices, we're part of professional groups and organizations, and we we read a lot of stuff to try to stay current.
Well, thank you very much for, as always, an exceptional presentation within a tremendous amount of detail. We really always value the presentation that you bring, although I think we always feel a little bit overwhelmed when we are processing it. I particularly wanted to just note the level of professionalism that I have seen grow in this department during my, you know, almost seven years on the board now. It's clear that the proactive nature of what you've been doing, your deep thought about the way you interact with the business case for the district, it really shows. And I think the the fact that we were able to deal with the exigencies brought about by COVID and go virtual for such a long period of time in the prior school year, almost smoothly, right? There were a few bumps in the road, of course, because it was something we had never done before, but the fact that we were able to do it without a complete train wreck is really a credit to the professionalism of your department, and we really, we we thank you every day, and we recognize what the work that you've been doing every single day. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Smith, who is the first one with her hand You are muted, my dear.
My apologies. I couldn't agree more with Ms. Savage. I don't know what it is, but I only know about half of like all that you all do. I understand probably maybe half, if that, of the whole thing. But when I'm listening to you and going through this, I am most excited about this presentation. I mean, I am tickled pink. And and why? Because I do see the system that has taken place, you know, upon your arrival, Mr. Baker, to the district and the building of your team with Ms. Wolf and Mr. Wild and and everyone else whose names I'm going to not mention, just because there's so many, or not so many, but many that I can't remember right off the bat. But I I really have seen how this has grown over the course now of years, and I just think it's just tremendous. And, you know, when I first looked at the presentation, I actually was like kind of a deer in headlights for like this first half because I was like, okay, what is it he wants me to understand about this? But as you spoke, I like, yeah, I got that, I got that. And then I really could turn my attention, though, to that user side that Ms. Wolf talked a lot about in terms of the the teacher data and the dashboards and and all of that, you know, sort of becoming more of an analyst, using that data to understand what's happening and to, you know, and to form the decisions that we need to make. So I'm I'm really saying, hopefully, not as eloquently, but the same as Madam Savage. But I just want to thank all of you and this entire team because this is such an important component of all of our work, and for everyone to have that comfortability and access to the system, a good system, and the support is is just fabulous. So thank you, thank you, all of you.
Board member Wilson.
Thank you, and good old to what all my colleagues stated. Also, I wanted to say when I was reviewing this in advance that these were beautiful evaluation, I'm sorry, visualizations. And also, just a question about more globally, I know that America's competitiveness is going to be based off of our embrace, to what extent we embrace technology, naturally we were forced to shift to a more digital and technology-based mode of learning. And while I know that there is concerns about screen time, I do, I'm curious about your thoughts about how to expose students to those future careers like data analytics, data analysis, and things of that nature, or just computer programming and things of that nature, just curious about that.
Yep, and I will welcome Ms. Bechtel into this conversation as well, but I'll tee it up to start. Historically, we've taken a a top-down approach to, I think, exposing students to specified, let's call it, computer science opportunities. And so it started at the high school, and we we bought into the pretty standard and widely adopted project leadway, for instance, and the Cisco programming from years ago. And and then we we had a plan and kind of brought that down in reverse articulation to the middle school realm, and we focused there on digital citizenship, kind of the culmination of of basic skills and application. And the the vision had always been also to continue to to feather that down into the elementary mind where you truly expose them to concepts, and it doesn't even have to be about a computer, it's the the type of thinking, it's the linear logical kind of approach to things, and also, of course, basic skill building. Now, we were doing all of that work for a couple of years, and I think we've gotten a bone thrown to us recently through the the release of the Digital Fluency and Computer Science standards that the state now has for us. And so we do have to, in fact, we're already in the process of implementing them, this year is about awareness, but we are really going to unpack those and look at opportunities to integrate those into what we already have in terms of curriculum so that, much like applying the tangible technology into teaching and learning, when it's ubiquitous and seamless and pure, it's not the thing, it just supports and enhances the actual objective. The same holds true, I believe, when we're talking about those standards, that they can be become part of, it used to be the four Cs, now these Digital Fluency and Computer Science standards can become part of what teachers are already doing because we don't want to get into the another thing on the plate for for every teacher either. We don't want to make them their own standalone because I think that also takes them out of context in a lot of cases. So I think to to try to answer simply, Ms. Wilson, it's it's two phases or stages, and it's ramping up foundational skills, applying them in the middle and giving them more opportunities through through coursework. And then in a high school, truly giving them the opportunity to dive into fully aligned computer science topics. I think that's probably the best approach for a K to 12 spectrum.
Thank you.
Once again, a great presentation. I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I want to tag on to what David was talking about. I mean, data is here to stay, whether you like it or not, that's the way of the future. Everything we do is being tracked, everything is data, and if you can analyze data, you're going to get a job, whatever sector it might be in. You know, so this is all great that we're putting this stuff together. In my dream is, you know, you had all this data on phone calls, let's say you had 30,000 phone calls a month by week, and that non-confidential data or, you know, but it's data, right? That that is sent to like a math class in the middle school or the high school, everybody's on Office 65, so they have it on their Chromebook. Take that data and do histograms, pie chart, different things, you know, so you're working with real data, and that might give kids more of a feel for what they will be doing later on in life. Also, on a separate dream, I would like to see like an after-school club where we our old technology is broken apart, and they see what instead of a computer looks like, what's the mainframe, where is the motherboard? Because they need to learn these things, and these are all job skills that, you know, back in the day, I mean, we did ourselves where, you know, the Y2K was going to happen and everybody went on to learn, but it created job opportunities, right? And so this is the way of the future. So we need, if we can expose our young kids to new technology, new add new facets of data and technology analysis, and I think, you know, it'll be awesome. So, I mean, I would love to see more of integration between, you know, what you do as well as what Ms. Bechtel's department does and incorporate more of that into the curriculum.
Just as a quick response to that, we are, Ms. Bechtel and I are partnered more closely than we have ever been over the past six months in particular, and we are both learning a lot about, yeah, you know, I guess, how we can maximize this partnership, and we're both understanding a great deal more about the details of of the respective work that we've done in silos prior, and now we see the opportunities for the interface. So we agree, and I thank you.
Board member Amin Yali.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Couple comments. Obviously, it's excellent presentation. I loved the infographics. I don't know how you did it, but I'm going to copy you somehow in my in my daily work. But regarding the email spike towards the middle of the year, I think email is kind of like a snowball. You throw it down the hill in the beginning of the year, and it just, you start picking up more as you go, and you go back, and you start emailing from, you know, previous emails, and either way, that makes sense. Either way, I just had a question regarding the benefit of using the Office 365 to hold the documents over the Google Drive. Is there is there like a strategic benefit to just sticking with 365?
I I am, I promise I'm going to try to do this as quickly as possible because I know we are way over. There is a business benefit. This is a case where Google truly is, it's better for instruction and routine teacher and academic collaboration. The business case is there for O365, and yes, there are many benefits, including if we if we used Teams more truly, then as you are creating and sharing documents in that space, it's that subversion, like the one version of the singular document of record. There are opportunities to embed that in different locations. There's more of an ecosystem across platforms inside of O365 than in Google. And the organization, the granular organization within O365 is much greater for, again, for business operations, not so much for the classroom space. So I I think we're at a point where we've decided as a district that Google is absolutely for us instructionally, and we, I think we believe that the O365 space is in fact going to be our best option for for business and productivity. And it doesn't mean that you can't use both, and many people do. We still work with O365 with a lot of students in secondary level in particular. So there's benefit, yes, but I, these, we're never going to standardize on one. I think we're going to be living in in both worlds.
I think I think I understand where you're coming from on that. Just in the light of time, I'm not going to keep asking about it, but it's it is something that I'm kind of curious about, this this singular file shared over multiple groups, but, you know, how that would change or how different groups edit it and keep their own versions of it is kind of interesting to me. But thank you, I appreciate you.
I don't see any other hands, but I did just want to make one more comment myself about the the way your action items that came out of your four-part slide with the bump up to the thing, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson, I see your hand now. Did you have something I didn't want to? No, yes.
Only on behalf of Board Member Mann, she's having audio issues, but she said this was an awesome presentation.
Yeah. So what I was going to just comment on is is the the systematic thinking about trying to insert the checkpoints, for example, at the contract point. That's really, I think, very helpful, and I think integrates so well with the intentions around getting paper-free and some sort of a workflow process. And I know that we on the board would look forward to seeing that for our own workflow, you know, the the need for contracts to get approved and policies to get approved through a variety of folks before they can come to the board board floor is a constant, just sort of niggling worry about like, is this happening in the right way? And are we approving it before it gets done, and what's going to happen if it doesn't? So we look forward to that, and we know you've made tremendous progress on that already with online registration and with the work that the athletics department has done, I hope in close coordination with you with final forms, where neither of those things existed just two or three years ago, and now we're practically paper-free on those two fronts. And I'm looking forward to seeing more and more of our business processes go in that direction. So you're free to comment if you like, but I just wanted to to make that note that we look forward to seeing that in our in our day-to-day lives as well.
I think your your comment was spot on, and I thank you for recognizing that. Thank you.
All right, everyone, good? If so, we will let these good folks go on to their next thing, and we will turn our attention to this CRE and equity update.
Good evening.
Good evening again, and, oh, there she is. My name is not necessarily on this particular presentation, but I will definitely turn it over to Dr. Wilson Turner.
Your name is on it because we are partners in this equity work, and I appreciate that. And I will also say, if there are questions about specific aspects, I'll probably be targeting some of those towards you. So thank you for allowing me to present this evening on our work over the past year, really on cultural responsive education and equity. What I like to highlight in in terms of our vision, vision, mission, and goals is that the equity work that we do, of course, aligns with each of those things explicitly in an effort to really increase the experience that our students have and our families have in working with us as well as our community partners. As you know, over the last few years, our cultural responsive education equity work is really focused in five key areas. One is now completely with the human resources. One is now completely with the human resources division, and so this night, this evening's presentation will focus on the four areas that we continue to work very intentionally on in our district, the areas of professional development, building equity teams, youth empowerment, and our equity policy, and the newly established metrics. So what I plan to do this evening is kind of take you through what we've done last year and what we're currently working on. So last year, we really took the opportunity to continue to push ourselves in our CRE and equity work, even though we were in all stages of virtual, remote, in-person, whatever it may be, models, and I really want to applaud the efforts of our participants in our professional development, because they really embraced it despite everything else that was going on. But I also want to applaud, and I'm going to name them very specifically, our CRE facilitators. Amanda Boyd, who is the Community School Site Coordinator at Giffen, Amanda Powers, our instructional supervisor for STEM, or excuse me, just science, elementary STEM, Amelia Gallagher, who's now the Assistant Principal over at Myers, Andrea Marquez-Clark at the high school, Joy Howard, who's at Hackett, a TA, Lee Roy Johnson, who's one of our brand-new teachers, but he was a TA last year, Lionel Harris, who's a homeschool coordinator, Mike Elliott, our social studies supervisor, Nancy Kessel, special education teacher at the middle level, Tina Cascone, Assistant Principal, Tom Gilio, who is our lifer in this work, and Walter Huntley, who's also one of our homeschool coordinators. This professional development work does not move forward without them. I am literally their cheerleader, what do you need, what resources do you need, how can I support you? They are leading this charge and are very thoughtful and intentional about how this work goes forward, and know how essential it is that this work is done correctly, and so we lean on them very heavily. So as we looked at our professional development work last year, we wanted to really focus on who is leading the effort at the building level, right? So people come to CRE cohort training, they get what they need as an individual, they go back into their classroom and do that work. We felt like that didn't change systems, and so we start to try to look at how do we begin to have a larger impact on the work in the system? And so as a result, we took our time last year to focus on developing building equity teams and providing them the appropriate professional development to lead that work, so that they became the boots on the ground to provide that support in each building. So each building equity team, which I'll talk a little bit about in a second, participated in four two-hour virtual sessions as a team, really focusing on the three core tensions, which are, you know, how you interact with this topic for yourself, how you put this into practice, and then how you begin to impact systems, and try to grow in their practices as a team to be able to do that work. Okay, thank you. And it was a very powerful session, because I think teams felt that they were in different places than they actually were after they went through and went through training, but they also got to grow and learn from one another, because we did partner teams from all different schools across the district in these sessions. In the next slide, you'll see what the survey results were for how they grew in the practices that we focused on in that, in those areas. The second part of our professional development focus in terms of growing the leaders of the work was the work that I applaud AppSA for reaching out to Lori and myself to partner with, to provide professional development through a book study called Unconscious Bias with all of our administrators in the AppSA unit. And we met, we tried to meet twice a month, but we always got once a month in last year to really unpack what we were learning through this text, and it really is a developmental approach to how you have conversations about race and address bias. And so it really allowed our leaders to dig deeply into their own knowledge about race and bias, reflect on situations that they've been in and how they've handled them, and to begin to think through and practice how they begin to address these things in real time, and really build up their competency in the work. A huge piece of what came out of that work was really making our walk match our talk, so to speak, and what we developed as the equity stance, and really saying, if this is what we are about, what is the work that we're actually doing that contributes to what we're about as leaders in this system, that we've continued to refine and revisit throughout this work? And so again, there's some survey results in the next slide that I'll share, but really what they emphasized was, we need to stop talking about the work and start doing the work, and they felt like this, these sessions really helped them to not just think and talk, but to really talk about the actions that they want to take, and then have kind of accountability, accountability partners in the work when they came back to each session. It's probably one of the most powerful things that Lori and I did last year with our teams, and the conversations that we had outside of those sessions, I thought were the biggest indicator of how leaders grew in that work, some of the reflections that they brought forward, and you know, Lori and I have our standing agenda items on equity, but before we could even get to some of those topics, they were bringing those things forward. And so that work was incredibly important. So the survey results are brief, it really was just a reflection of where they started and where they ended for the administrators, which I'll jump down to, which was really developing their comfort level to lead this work and have these conversations at the building level, and we saw about a 14% jump there. For our equity teams, we really focused on the knowledge that we were trying to develop with them to ensure that they were growing in those areas, and in every area except for the three core tensions, they grew 20 to 30% in terms of their, their knowledge in that area. And core tensions, again, is the framework that we use to really help them understand, you kind of sit in these buckets as you go through this work, you start with yourself, you start with your, then you move to your practices, and then you begin to look at systems. So this year, we returned to our full cohort model, and again, tried to be really intentional, and so this fall, we started out by training 50 people, actually, it's going to be 100 for fall and spring, but total, but 50 people in two different cohorts in the traditional cohort model, but we took a targeted group of people. So again, looking at that leadership, we took our instructional coaches, right? These are the people who are influencing our teacher practices every single day, who are influencing how our curriculum is revised and to put in place. And we looked at our student support team, these are the people who are leading our discipline and behavior initiatives in our building, and are setting the tone for how we approach these actions in our system. And so we're really trying to influence where key people are who have this knowledge, so that begins to shape what happens in our buildings. And again, we, we didn't finish our book study, we've got halfway through our book, because we stopped and did some really key work, and so we continue that this year, despite fits and starts with everything going on with our administrators, and they still remain extremely committed to the work, and I think as you hear their, their building-level presentations that they're doing at the board meeting, you're hearing the ownership that they're taking around the equity work occurring in their buildings, which is really powerful. So building equity teams is the next area, and Ms. McKenna and I made it very clear in our way to our administrators that it was our expectation that every building would have an established equity team with established members, a regular meeting schedule, and a plan of action that they were attempting to accomplish this year. And as a result, that was accomplished, each building has an equity team, secondary got fancy and began to merge their building leadership team with their equity team, because if the equity work is the work, it should be infused in everything that we do, and the leadership team is the ones doing that work. And so as mentioned before, these teams receive specific training, and teams are at various stages, so some teams have been established for, you know, two, three years, and they were already gung-ho in this work, other teams were brand-new, they hadn't really established themselves, and other teams were rebuilding themselves, because they had completely new staff members who were part of their team. But each team took on the point in the work where they needed to start to begin to grow with work that needs to occur in their buildings. And one of the main assignments for the equity teams at the elementary level were for them to select a one-school-one-book project, so they picked the text, and a project that they would do to help younger children begin to engage in this work, to address the social justice learning standards that are appropriate for their level. In order to measure some of the efforts of the building equity team, we also added the APPR indicator, and I want to thank AppSA for their partnership, and as we sit at the table and figure out what indicators sit in our evaluation tool for our teachers, to really support the work of what we say we do as a district around equity. And so we were able to bring in the indicator 2.2A incorporates diverse social and cultural perspectives for teachers to plan how they bring these, these concepts into their instruction. And last year, being the first time we did this, we had 98.6% of teachers do that at an effective or highly effective level to plan for incorporating those components into their instruction. And so we continue to build the capacity of our teams and our teachers to be able to have this lens in the work and bring it front and center to the instructional work that we're doing with our students. So for this year, we continue to have our equity teams meet, they are focused this year on building their plans around those three core tensions, depending on where they are as a team and where their building is, to build up their self-knowledge as a team, to incorporate instructional practices for their building, and to start to look at, for those teams that are ready, what systemic changes are you, are you trying to address with your equity team? And as I mentioned, secondary teams have moved into building equity leadership teams, so that work is merged, and we are again, working with the Charles Carl E. Toohey Foundation to support our one-school-one-book effort, he gave us a tremendous amount of money last year to support these efforts, and have met with him several times this year so that we could do so again, and middle school and secondary have looked to also join that initiative so that their students have access to something similar. Our next bucket is youth empowerment, and we were really overzealous last year, we thought we would do building equity teams, we thought we would do youth empowerment, like we were going to do it all in COVID, like we were going to do it all, and with teams in various stages of the work. And we realized very quickly that those beginning equity teams needed to focus on developing their equity teams. But there were teams that were, you know, just needed to fine-tune their equity teams and were able to start doing some, some youth empowerment work, Hackett, Pine Hills, Arbor Hill, who had already had some established student teams, really began to bring that really powerful work out, and really hear student voice in a way that was very different than in the past. But despite our attempted launch and not really getting those student leadership teams off the ground, buildings were very clear on the importance of student voice, particularly during a pandemic. And so, you know, some of our social-emotional learning work really leveraged student voice in different spaces, and leveraging that voice in curriculum. And so some of the evidence that we provided to the Carl E. Toohey Foundation about the texts that they provided to us or to our staff, really elevated how we brought student voice forward, particularly in issues of equity and social justice. And as you have seen multiple times, the incredible work that our secondary instructional supervisors have done to do those curriculum modifications so that student voice is present in the work, and I give a lot of credit to them, we designed Look Force for our walkthroughs to really begin to tease out how we are really engaging student voice in our everyday instructional work. So for this year, after Lori and I really pushed equity teams last year, this year we said to our buildings, this year, everyone will have a student leadership team that deals with equity issues amongst, amongst other things, and some are dedicated student equity teams. And so it's been really awesome to talk to principals and assistant principals and homeschool coordinators who have been leading the charge, and classroom teachers, and you name it, of leading the charge of creating these student leadership teams, many held elections, many have developed synods, many have developed assemblies, like it is just incredible thing that elementary-age students in particular are getting this experience that their voice matters and that there's a structure for this to happen, and we're expanding whose voice is heard at the secondary level in terms of developing teams that look this way. And so a couple of our CRE facilitators, like this is their sweet spot, and so they will be taking on the district student equity leadership team, well, they'll be taking representatives from each building and beginning to look at what district equity issues we can address, and also trying to find a way to get those students to the table in the community where student voice is needed around decisions that are being made in our community. So this is probably, again, the most exciting work that we're doing this year in this area, and I'm really, I really want to applaud our buildings, again, despite everything's going on, they made a commitment to get student voice, and I think it's bringing a different life to buildings as a result of that. And then last but not least, our last bucket is the equity policy, and I'm going to, to quote my superintendent, I'm going to speak about this at a high level, and if she would like to add anything, she can jump right in. But as you all know, we worked very hard last year on developing the equity metrics, superintendent led that charge with our district and building administrators, with the Board of Education, with Cabinet, to come up with these seven categories to really align with what we say we want to have happen in our equity policy. And so quickly, the categories are equitable student academic success, equitable student success beyond academics, equitable improvements to curriculum, instruction, including professional development, equitable resource distribution, success in equitable hiring and retention, success in equitable student and family engagement, and success in equitable community engagement. And so we've been working since then to begin to figure out what evidence we can collect in each of these areas to show that we are making the progress that we say we want to make in our equity policy. And then in addition to that, it's, we have brought together the equity, district equity committee to review our equity policy and align it with the New York State School Board Association sample policy, and to align it with our, and to integrate our equity metrics into our policy. And so I know that comes before the policy committee soon for review before it goes out for action. And so we'll continue to work this year around how we develop those collection procedures for our equity metrics. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and if any particular, I'm getting a little bit of feedback, can somebody mute, anybody who's not muted mute? That sounds better. But I just wanted to particularly recognize the depth of some of the work, and yet the practicality of some of the work, it's kind of amazing to see you do both deep, important foundational work, and yet see it implement almost in real time. I mean, that, to me, is really the crux of what we have to do to move faster, move deep, but move quickly through this important material, so I really, I'm very, very pleased to see so much was done, and particularly in this, all the most difficult of all years. I think the commitment to keeping this front and center while, while we were dealing with all that you all managed to do over the last two years, really shows how deeply held the value is by the district that we are going to commit to this no matter what, it is the work, and so I really appreciate that. And Ms. Smith, I'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you, this is just another area that, well, I'm going to say I'm tickled pink as well here, but it also is such, it is just very powerful and meaningful, and I thank you, Dr. Wilson Turner, and the entire staff for this important work, and I think I want to just also applaud you all for, the district, as a district, having started this work even way before some of the incidences, you know, two years ago, you know, you know, unfortunate deaths of George Floyd, and, you know, Mr. Aubrey, and, and, you know, many, many, you know, other black and brown men and women, and then Black Lives, Lives, et cetera. And so I think you were well-positioned, we were well-positioned as a district to take on this work, and I do agree very wholeheartedly with Ms. Savage, and it's interesting, because you are doing this work, I think, rather quickly, there's now, it seems, and it's very deep commitment, but it's also, it's moving, but it's still at a pace where it feels like you understand the urgency of it, but we're not reactive, you know what I mean? And that really does make it, it's very thoughtful, it's very, you know, deliberate and purposeful, and it is the work, and it affects everything, as you've talked, you can see how it's affecting our teaching and learning process, you can see how it's infecting and affecting the climate and culture, you know, what we do around making sure our students have access to computer equipment and technology, and, I mean, so it's, it is the work that has to occur if we are to be the people that we say we want to be. And I love what you said, can't be said enough, we can't just simply, oh, let's talk about it, let's just have this, you know, diversity training and check the box that we did it. No, no, it is walking the talk, and I have to be honest with you and say, this is the only place outside of my home where this is happening in my life, sad to say that it is not happening for me anywhere else, and I love how this is happening and rolling out, and so I applaud everyone. I also just wanted to say that I'm so pleased that I knew you were going to do this, and that is to look at the NISBA policy, you know, and sort of look to see what we might, you know, change or not change, or confirm or not confirm what's there. I wanted to also point to another document, and if you don't have it, I believe, I know I do have it on my desk, and the Regents put together this DEI Diversity Equity Inclusion Work Group, and they have this document. And, you know, again, you know, very lovely piece to do, you know, to have available, but again, where's the, you know, the meat, where's, you know, we've got to keep moving on this, and we are ahead of, you know, if we look at that document, our district is really quite ahead, and, and one of the things I'm very thankful for is we don't have to, we didn't have to And one of the things I'm very thankful for is we don't have to, we didn't have to go through being told, oh, have a policy, have this, put this in place. That's not going to work. What we have done as a district, it's rolled out rather organically, and I'm not saying it hasn't had its tensions and stuff, but there's a community that has developed here and of this work. And I just love how you've rolled this out, and it warms my heart and makes me feel very hopeful about the world in which we live, in the short term and in the long term. So thank you, everyone, for what you're doing in this effort.
In alignment with that document you mentioned, Ms. Smith, is the, I don't know if you guys remember back in the spring, but we did have all of our buildings complete a survey that comes from there to really get a sense of where authentically we are in those practices, and we'll look to repeat that again at the end of this year. I didn't include it here because Lori and I presented it back in the spring, but it gives us, you know, another touch point of how we're really doing this work in alignment with the state initiatives as well.
I'd like to interject that I think it's important that as we talk about the different documents that come from our outside entities and agencies, because of where we are in our work, when we look at those documents, we look at, number one, what are the things that we've done? How can we improve on those things that we've already done? But then also, things that we may need to include. We don't look to just force it in right then and there. We look strategically at where are those things that other entities and all the research that we have, where does it fit within what we have already done so that it is not one more thing? It's just integrating and enhancing the work that we're already doing. Because one of the things that I know you hear all the time is, the district keeps doing new initiatives, we keep adding things on, we keep doing this. And we really pull back from that, and we try to examine the research because we are a research-based organization. Everything we do is grounded in the research and in the data. But everything that is out there is not for everything that we do. And just because it works in one place doesn't mean that we can pull it off of a shelf and just cookie cutter place it in our district. And so, one of the things that we're very careful about is when we see the different ideas and we see the different pieces of research, we don't necessarily say, oh, that'll be great for every single school. And now, schools have to uproot what they're doing and what's working just to do the latest fad. That's not what we're going to do. We're going to look at that latest fad, research-based, and then see what are the things that we can implement? And then, it may not look exactly like that. So I'll say Montessori, because Mr. Powell reported today. At Montessori, he may be able to look at those documents and then say, hmm, based on our model, we can take this, tweak it this way, I'll have my teachers work on it, we'll look at it together, and then we'll see how we can morph it into something that enhances what we're already doing. And so, I think that's one of the things to understand that foundationally, we do as a district. We don't just take the latest research off the shelf and plop it in and say, nope, now we're going to do this. And every school has to do this. If you notice, the things that we are talking about that have been required by every school, those are systemic pieces. But how it is implemented is based on what works best for that particular building. So it may look a little differently as you move throughout the district and see what our schools are doing.
Thank you very much. We do, I know that that's something we really appreciate is the thoughtfulness, as Ms. Smith used that word earlier, that it's not a matter of throwing things against the wall and seeing what sticks, but rather to really being strategic and working to build the foundation to ensure that the work has longevity, right? That's really what we're looking for is a long-term implementation. Board Member Wilson.
Hello, and thank you for an excellent presentation as usual. Much of what everyone stated, especially Board Member Smith, I concur. And in an era of buzzwords and the aforementioned misinformation that comes along with them, I feel like we are, we are, the district, you all, are trailblazing a path to operationalized equity. This is not work that's historical or goes back decades, it's actually emerging. And we're co-creating it together, which I appreciate. And sometimes I have concerns whether people hear CRE and hear CRT, for example. And I appreciate that we're going deeper than just saying it, we're embedding it at all levels, and appreciate the candor and quite frankly, how hard it is to examine what is racism, what is anti-racism, and of course, the natural insecurities that can emerge when people hear change or redistribution. And somehow, that means I get less or someone is taking away from me. What about me? How does this affect me? And the shift to how does this affect everyone? So I appreciate that. And as Board Member Smith indicated, between the summer uprisings against racial injustice in the context of the pandemic, we're doing unprecedented work on top of everything else and still forging ahead. And very happy to hear our students are taking these skills to community, taking these skills and will be applying them to community issues. And my final comment sort of emerged earlier during the district presentation, there was a slide about the middle school feeder alignment pattern. However, I feel that I wanted to more embed this comment here, that I know that many, many sort of comments and input we get are, why are you doing all this data? Why don't you go just based off of the existing locations? And I just feel like in this conversation, what emerges is that we do have to examine the not-so-distant history of redlining and other forms of institutional racism that produces inequitable outcomes and make it so difficult to just do what we've been doing. And that's why we're going so deep and, you know, doing all this examination. And we're going to do a multifaceted, multidisciplinary examination of all this, and anyone is welcome to join us in that effort. So thank you.
Seeing no more hands, I'm wondering if, oh, Ms. Smith, I was, I tried, I started this down. Go ahead, Vicky.
No, I was waiting to see if anyone else had anything else. I think two things. I also, again, in terms of really the significance of the work and watching this all kind of develop and unfold, I recognize that it's helped me also as a board member kind of try to keep walking and keep moving. You got darts and all kinds of things coming at you through many different means, but when you, I believe, when you are working together and you all have, you know, confidence in what we're doing, that it's okay. Like I can deflect that, right? No superwoman or anything like that. But together, I feel like we're able to kind of walk together and say, you know what? Our eye is on the prize. And so, that's what has helped me a lot from what the district work has been doing. I know that Ms. Savage and the board will talk tonight about our own goals, but I wanted to just talk about two elements. And I believe that Ms. Savage didn't really talk as in-depth about this over the last year or so. And now that I'm about to go through the same experience, I'm hoping that we'll talk more in-depth about it. And it's these, our participation in the school board partners, excuse me, School Board Partners program. So, and again, that is where largely people of color who sit on school boards, district boards, charter school boards, whatever, who are focused on this work are doing it together. And I think I want to make sure that what we do as a board also gets incorporated into this whole equity CRE piece. I don't think we've yet, you know, caught up to where you all are, so we haven't really talked about it in its fullest realm. But I think you're going to start to see some of that from the board because we're also partners in this. And not just in terms of approving and saying, oh, yeah, go forth, do this, but we have to also experience this. We have to also, you know, embrace this as part of how we make our decisions as well, you know? And so, I just want to, again, thank everyone for all of this work. It's definitely shaped my own thinking and I dare say, the entire board's thinking. And we have this piece of work that is, that I think all of us are really focused on attending to, to the point where I think it's fair to say, we've even kind of scaled back our goals a little bit to focus on what's really important for us to do and manage. So again, I'm sorry, I'll stop talking, but just wanted to say thank you again.
So I'll just pick up and say welcome, official welcome for School Board Partners Cohort Four. So those of you who have not Googled it, School Board Partners is a very equity-driven entity focused on providing additional training and support for school board members who are working towards equity and it's a national organization. So that means every member, just every school board member who participates comes from a different set of political realities, right? In terms of what their state's legislation and regulations are and what their school board, school structure is, right? Most states have county-wide structures, very different than ours. So so many different things. And that makes me reflect on what the superintendent said, which is not everything fits everybody. But that doesn't mean that we can't learn from looking at what others are doing. And School Board Partners definitely has influenced my approach to things and given me food for thought in many, in many cases. So it's been a good experience, and I'm so glad that Vicky decided that she wants to do it as well.
And Madam Savage, I'm sorry, just one more little piece of this. So I also am part of what's now Cohort 2022. It's an organization called Promise 54, and they have this program called DEI Accelerator. And it is going to be a year of, I have meetings like nearly twice a month and all kinds of things going on. And I do want to share that, you know, out with not just the board, but the district staff as well. Part of what I will be doing is some survey work, which they are encouraging us to expand, you know, to our other networks. And so, I want to share some of that survey information. And if there's a way to participate in that, I want to see if that's possible. You know, you would control your own data. But essentially, it is around the same topics and things that we're talking about now. And I won't define that program for you, but I will send a link so that you all have it, so you can see what I'll be doing for the next year or so. So it's another fellows kind of program with about a hundred other folks across the country doing this work. Thank you.
Like magic, it's 9:14, and time to move on to the next thing, which is scheduled for 9:15 on our calendar. But I think we get to keep Dr. Wilson Turner because we'll be talking about the elementary acceleration and enrichment update.
Yes. Oh, I lost my screen. There you go. Okay, so good evening again. And so, this presentation will focus on the elementary efforts of connecting what we do at the elementary level with the opportunities that are available to our students at the secondary level. And I will begin again with our guiding principles and simply say that this presentation and the work that we're doing here aligns most particularly with increasing student achievement, enhancing the delivery of quality instruction, and partnering with our diverse communities in terms of our enrichment efforts. So to start with an overview, we created our purpose. We originally came together in 2019 to really think about how we create clear pathways for elementary students to access honors and acceleration at the time, opportunities at the secondary level, and really look at what structures need to be created for students to accelerate their learning. And I do appreciate the feedback that we are talking about all students when we talk about this piece, not just those students who have elite skills, but how are we creating this path for all of our students so that they have access to multiple opportunities? We set our focus at the time to look at three areas, what we call whole school enrichment opportunities, targeted enrichment for a smaller subset of students with some skills, and acceleration procedures for students who are gifted in particular areas. And so, tonight's presentation will really focus on looking at each of those three areas, where we started, how COVID impacted our efforts, and where we, what we were able to accomplish despite of that, and where we plan to go next. And so, we'll start with whole school enrichment. Whole school enrichment is really focused on, when we talked about enrichment, we've talked about should it be just what happens in the after-school program? Should it be just what happens with, you know, a small subset of students? Or is there really this space that we want to create where we enrich all of our students in a multitude of ways that helps better prepare them for what is ahead for them? And so, we took some time to look at what we can do around whole school enrichment using our encore instruction to really enhance what happens in our core classrooms. And so, when we initially came together and discussed in early 2019, 2020, we were thinking that we would be poised to roll out whole school enrichment for library for the 2021 school year, and then look at physical education opportunities the next year, and then art and music the two years after that. And to really scale up a model, we had seen work at Philip Skyler Achievement Academy at the time where they were using community schools funding that they had received to provide enrichment each month for their students, either by grade level or by primary or by intermediate. And we had started that work really with the librarians because they were in the process of revising their curriculum and had a lot of flexibility to really enhance what was happening with topics in the core classroom area and providing enrichment right embedded in their library time for students. And they began that work really even before the end of the school year. And even into COVID, really took, each librarian took a grade level and began to do some of that enhancement work, even as a part of their asynchronous work, and are trying to bring that to light this year. However, as you all know, last year, we weren't really able to move forward with this concept of whole school enrichment at a very detailed level because most of our encore instruction occurred asynchronously. So students didn't even have their base level opportunities in terms of enrichment. And we had reductions in those areas, and we also had a shortened school day to accommodate what needed to happen in COVID. However, as mentioned, we continue to move forward. So this school year, we have two schools who are receivership schools, who are also community schools, aid schools, who worked on a model where they could bring enrichment to every classroom once a week using community partners. And so, each week, there's a different module for different grade levels. So they may be doing, you know, gardening with one partnership, they may be doing robotics with another partnership, where those students have a period of enrichment while their classroom teachers are doing planning, instructional planning with the coaches. And so, students aren't losing instruction, they're getting enhanced instruction during that time, while teachers are getting enhanced planning opportunities for that time. And so, those are two examples of whole school enrichment that are occurring right now that we're able to do in our current structure. And as I mentioned, it's a more intensive model than what occurred at Skyler Achievement Academy because that was primarily once a month and allowed for mixed cohorting, which we're not allowed to do at this moment in time. Beyond that, when we built schedules this year and we looked at resources, we were pressed to get our students back, of course, in person, but also to get them back into the encore classes that when they, when we talked to them about COVID was probably the most impactful thing for them, is not being able to engage in those live encore classes. And so, we do have some opportunities that vary, you know, from building to building based on schedule, where students are receiving an extra period of an encore class, physical education, music, library, or art, what that supports a planning time for teachers that I'm going to talk about in a little bit. And so, we are trying to get back on track with our encore instruction, so to speak, and our encore exposure for our students. But as mentioned above, we're going to need to come back to our conversation about how we begin to expand and enrich using our encores for our students who are gifted in those areas. So our next steps is we have a new PE instructional supervisor who's already hit the ground running and is working to create athletic pathways for our elementary age students as a source of enrichment. And he'll, we'll be inviting him to join us to look at our physical education curriculum going forward and what our timeline can be for advancing that. We are in the process of hiring a new humanities supervisor at the elementary level who works directly with our librarians so that we can revisit that timeline and determine how we want to continue to enhance that work. And we are, our fine art supervisor will also be brought back to the table because '22 through '24 was supposed to be the years that we began that. And again, we'll look at how realistic a timeline it is and what we can begin to develop around those particular areas. We haven't excluded our work with our community partners, we just worry that we'll be, we'll be limited in being able to replicate something as large as what happens at Giffen and Sheridan Prep at this point in time. But we will begin to look at what whole school enrichment options we have available to leverage with our community partners. But we will begin to look at what whole school enrichment options we have available to leverage with our community partners. So after whole school enrichment was targeted enrichment, which we spent a lot of time trying to think through and we're really excited about the ability of bringing together a group of students across our district at the elementary level, the fourth and fifth grade, to, to really give them an enhanced experience to better prepare them for what was to come, and also to really provide them an opportunity to begin to integrate socially across different schools before they hit middle schools and see each other in classes. But again, with COVID, we had to shift our thinking because we wouldn't be missing classrooms, let alone buildings. But COVID provided some other opportunities that came towards the end of last year, which I'll talk through in this section. So as mentioned, we had designed a whole, an enrichment program. We were going to take children off-site, we were going to have a dedicated teacher who is going to basically, you know, once a week, provide students with an enriched opportunity. They would have to come back to school and kind of make up what work was missed. But we felt confident with the targeted group of students we would select, that they would have the capacity to do that with teacher support and parent support. And COVID, we really just paused our entire conversation around this. But COVID also created a gap in the data that we would use to determine our child find process that we wanted to kind of execute to make that happen. But we still, I feel like, continued to, to, to do some work last year, really just to meet the basic needs of our students, but began to think about with the opportunity with funding at the end of last year, how do we begin to enhance our children's learning experience, right? And I know we talked as a, as a district about, not about remediation, but really about accelerating our students' learning when they return to us, you know, in a, in a full school model this year. And so we really had the opportunity to leverage some things. And so one of the things you heard Mr. Powell talk about and probably your other principals talk about is this Tier One Plan. We talk about tier, the different tiers of instruction that occur in education. Tier One being the core instruction that happens for students every single day that ensures that they get grade level standards, regardless of what their entry point is, skill level, but also enhancing our Tier One instruction to make sure that we're able to close gaps for students. So we've had Tier One Plans forever, they're not new. However, they were used inconsistently and monitored inconsistently. And so one of the things that we thought we could do most effectively to begin to meet the individual needs of some of our most talented students was to enhance our Tier One Plan process. And really, it's become not just planning, but also the monitoring. Hold on, sorry. Sorry, someone's losing a tooth. So the Tier One Plans have allowed us to take data on each individual student, as Mr. Powell mentioned, and create instruction targeted to, for them during our Tier One time, but also during our response to intervention time. And so it becomes less about remediation, but what does each individual student need to advance to their next level, right? So we're trying to embed our targeted enrichment, or really enhancement for all students in the procedures that we already have. And so what we were able to do with our approved budget last year was add instructional teaching assistants, add math interventionists, math interventions for the first time ever, which has been a huge, huge success, increase our reading teachers, and then create our model to support classroom teachers during small group instruction for response to intervention. And as a result, what we found this year is we have this really targeted instruction happening with resources in our ELA classrooms that is making a difference for students and is really helping teachers refine how they're teaching to make the most effective use of that time. And I think what's really well done or easily, more easily done in ELA is you can have a group of first graders who is still learning their letters and sounds, getting what they need from both the classroom teacher and the reading teacher or the teaching assistant that we've added to K one-two or to K one-two. And you can have the precocious, you know, child who's reading at the second and almost third grade level doing their, their small group instruction that allows them to do the grade level work, but to go well beyond the grade level work with extension activities and practices that are necessary for them. So I think we cover the gamut in that space in terms of being able to target enrichment for those students. However, when we get to some of the challenges that we faced around this with math, that, like I said, I can't emphasize enough how important the math interventionist ad has been. But, and I don't often say this, like, we're stretching that really thin. With one math interventionist per building, we're not able to get the gamut of skills that may exist in a classroom, right? But we, it's making a difference in the students that they're able to work with, and we really concentrated them in three through five. We've also struggled to find instructional TAs because we've had to prioritize, of course, our special education mandated teaching assistant positions before we can fill our instructional. The ones we do have, as you have seen this year, have, you know, had to be pulled to cover classes. And so it hasn't been as consistent as we want, but we know when we, when it's there, it's the right model to use because they can support both ELA and math enhancements for our primary age students. And so one of the asks in this presentation that you'll see later is going to be around that math interventionist work so we can continue to expand our efforts to do this work in-house for as long as we need to be able to do that work in-house. I want to commend Sarah and Frank, our ELA and secondary, excuse me, our elementary and secondary math supervisors for the collaborative work that they've done to really look at the math pathway and begin to streamline their efforts to make sure our students at the elementary level have the skills necessary to access the pathways that are being built at the secondary level. And Karen has done a whole SBU on that, and I am really giving a lot of this over to Karen in the curriculum wheelhouse piece of it, but really staying in touch with, you know, what the opportunities are and what we need to do at the elementary level to support students so they're ready for those particular components. And so they'll continue, continue under Karen's leadership, very intentionally to align the work at the elementary level with that of the secondary level, particularly when we talk about those students who are particularly obsessional in math and how we make sure that they're challenged and their needs are met in the elementary side. So our next steps is we will go back to baseline with our winter NWA assessment. Winter is, I think we've talked about before, usually our best data point in NWA. It's where we see children experience the most growth, it's where they've hit their rhythm. It's not surrounded by a whole other, you know, sort of testing, New York State testing, et cetera. And it, and it gives us enough lead time to begin to look at who those students are. And so we'll begin to recreate our baseline to figure out, you know, what we would use as a child find process in addition to all of our other data points. We will be requesting as a part of the academic plan to expand our math interventionist model so that we can reach a wealth of students in that three through five grade band. Hopefully with COVID restrictions lifting, we can begin to look at some cross-classroom groupings so that students are better aligned and we can more effectively utilize that resource. And as I mentioned, our STEM supervisors will continue to partner together to look at curriculum and acceleration opportunities to make sure we build the bridge to the middle level. So the last portion is around acceleration. And so we've separated enrichment and acceleration, enrichment going deeper and being more rigorous with acceleration, which is really how we address our students who are, are really gifted in some ways or just very advanced in some ways in different academic areas. And we do really focus primarily on the core content areas during this section. So when I presented back in January twenty twenty, we discussed the difference between whole grade acceleration and content acceleration. Whole grade acceleration is, you know, most people are familiar with it. We're going to skip the student because they're just very exceptional or very high performing in all areas. These students typically sit in the ninety-fifth percentile or higher in, in multiple measures. But we also looked at social emotional assessments to make sure that we be developmentally appropriate to advance them. And we always, always work with the parent in, in making this decision. And so we talked about establishing some protocols and procedures for this to happen. But that has absolutely evolved, as you'll see in the next slide. Content acceleration is something that was done in a very limited way. And that's where you accelerate students for one particular content area. And that gets very tricky in the elementary level even before COVID in terms of coordinating schedules, et cetera. And so being able to do those enhancements within our classrooms with our interventionists is a more effective model we found for content acceleration. We had a long discussion, we met back in January twenty twenty about what we do with our students in math. And I really do think if we can tap our math interventionists, we can create something that better supports those students without having them straddle two buildings when it comes to being accelerated in math. So we're really trying to look how we enhance that work in, in-house. After going through COVID, what we've learned is that for most students, doing math virtually is not the most effective way to do math instruction. And so the more that we're able to have the hands-on math instruction for our students as a way to accelerate them, the better. And I heard that from Ms. Mabrah multiple times, you know, what, you know, how challenging it is to do the level of teaching you want to do in math virtually. So we really kind of paused whole grade acceleration for COVID. It was, you know, for, for the most part, nineteen twenty wasn't impacted because usually that acceleration happens in the fall. So those students had already been accelerated. But going into the twenty twenty-one school year, we really just got, brought children back to school. As we brought children back to school, we didn't have requests and we didn't kind of seek students out to accelerate at that point in time. Probably actually got more questions at that point in time about what happens if I don't have my kid in at this point in time. But what we have found is over the years, we, it's usually just a handful of children, two to three children that we're accelerating and having them do a con, a whole grade acceleration. And it's usually students coming out of pre-K who have, you know, really exceptional foundational skills. And sometimes children coming out of K who have those really exceptional skills where parents want to advance them to the next year. Frequently, it's students who have a late birthday who just missed the cutoff by a couple of days. And so they, you know, they're not that far from their peers. But we have not, in my time, seen or selected students to accelerate at second grade or third grade or fourth grade, largely because they've, they've established their peer groups, they've, you know, kind of established where they are in that, that, that process in that school. And it doesn't tend to happen there. So it does happen in the early years. And we are, in the next steps you'll see, looking at, you know, when does IQ stabilize for students who we're considering are, are, you know, truly gifted and truly talented? And there's research out there that our, our response intervention coordinator is doing as a part of this committee's work to, to see when it's best to make those decisions. Should we be making those decisions when they're in kindergarten? Or should we be making those decisions when they're in third grade or fifth grade based on when those pieces may happen? Is IQ the best measure to look at when trying to make those decisions? What other data points do we need to consider? So it's given us some time to kind of reflect on how we're making decisions about when students accelerate. What I will say is that we haven't, during my tenure, had a, an experience, experience where a student accelerated and wasn't successful or shouldn't have, for which I'm very grateful. And I'm really grateful for, for parents who, when presented with data that says, mm, this is not going to be the right thing for your child, or socially, they're not quite ready for it, or they've been responsive to that and really worked with us and had conversation and, and trusted us in many ways to do some of that acceleration in the classroom for their student. But where it's worked, we really had that partnership with them. So I'm actually, sorry, next slide, I'm, I'm using my own, so I'm not always keeping up with you guys. So again, with content acceleration, this year, we're, we're still really, we're, we're not going to put a child in another, in another classroom for a content area. We are really working on using Tier One effectively and using our interventionists effectively to really challenge students in that particular subject area. And we are trying to, I shouldn't say trying to, we've really refined the response to intervention block in the schedule because they're tied to another human coming into your classroom. And so that time is really a protected time for math intervention and acceleration. It's really a protected time for ELA acceleration and intervention because there's usually another adult who's pushing into that classroom that allows a teacher to pull a small group while that other adult is pulling a small group. But we do believe a math interventionist would be better poised to provide true acceleration beyond what's taught in that particular grade level to better refine what's happening in our, in our math, in our math block during that time. We do still use our computer platforms and computers are not the end-all be-all in the sense of providing that acceleration and instruction, but it is a, a solid component to our program that allows students to continue to work independently at their pace. It allows teachers to go in and plan for students on that platform so that they're getting the correct level of instruction that continues to support, enrich, and enhance them. And so we'll continue to use all the resources that we have at our, at our disposal, particularly this year where we're not moving students around, to really ensure that children are, are challenged, accelerated, and that we're going deep enough for them and not just leaving them at grade level if they're well beyond grade level. So as I mentioned, our next steps are really to contain, to look at the research around, you know, if we're doing right by our students in terms of whole grade acceleration, and which grade levels that's most appropriate for that to happen, and ensure that it's an unbiased process, right? That there's a partnership between the school and the parent and the data to really make a determination about students. And as far as content acceleration, we really do want to try to tackle the needs of our, our high math needs students with additional math interventionists, the way we do with ELA. And as I mentioned before, the continued alignment between the K through eight math curriculum to ensure that our students are ready for the different pathways that are being designed at the secondary level. And that concludes this presentation. Let me mute, I think sometimes it's me.
That's you, I don't know. But in particular, this is very rewarding because the policy that underlies this presentation was adopted relatively recently, right, just a little while ago. So it's really terrific to see the policy infrastructure foundation start generating real progress in the district. And we know that this is a very tricky area in, as I know, Board Member Wilson talks very effectively about, about the, the history of what has brought us to this point in this country by race and class and how that impacts children's outcomes and where they are coming from. And I really respect and appreciate the way you've been so thoughtful about ensuring that all children are, have opportunity for enrichment and acceleration and that we're not just continuing to further focus resources where there's already a lot of resources. So I really appreciate the, the deep thought that went into the way this was structured. And I now see Board Member Kretschy has a hand up, and we'll start with her.
Sure, I just wanted to thank Dr. Wilson Turner because I'm really, I'm really amazed that this has been going on for the past two years, that we've been able to continue it, and that we've been able to find the best way to get this kind of enrichment through the pushing into the elementary classrooms or through the all-class type enrichment. I'm really thrilled, I'm so glad that we're doing this. It really makes, I think it's going to really make the difference for a lot of kids, giving them something that's really challenging and engages them. So, and, and I really like that we're focusing more on elementary school math to get more kids ready to do math at a really high level. So thank you so much.
One other quick point I wanted to ask about or comment on is I know over the years, we've been very cognizant of the percentage of time our students have substitute teachers because they're being drawn into professional development or some other kind of work. And I know that I've been a real voice for trying to do additional training for subs and doing more, making our subs more effective. But this actually seems like a, an even better way to provide that coverage when teachers need to be out of the classroom because you've got a sort of a trained person working on a specific set of things. And I know it can't necessarily help with a teacher who needs a sub because they're suddenly sick. But for professional development types, sub needs where we know a teacher's coming out, these enrichment opportunities are a perfect way to sort of mesh in and reduce the number of days that our students are in a room with a professional who's not really doing much more than helping maybe move a little bit along. So I'm interested if, if you've been thinking about it in that way.
It's exactly what Sheridan Prep and Giffen were thinking. And it, like I said, it was like a, a two-for-one, right? They were thinking, how are we, a community school if we're only offering enrichment to the forty-five kids who stay after school every day with us, right? And so how do we, how do we expand that to reach all of our students? Because they all need these opportunities in order to enhance their learning. And at the same time, you know, how do we get our teachers more time, right? And so it's always about time, particularly at the elementary level where they're all things to all people. But to give our teachers more time to do the work that they want to do, like, they want to be, you know, better at what, getting what our students need in front of them. And so it's been a nice balance and it's, it's, you know, good practices we take from where we've seen it happen elsewhere. And it was, we, we heard the idea first a couple of years ago at one of the receivership conferences that the State Education Department put on, a school out in Syracuse did this model where they actually partnered with Syracuse University. And Syracuse University's staff and students provided an enrichment block for teach, for students while teachers went and did this planning model. And so we've been talking about it and we, actually pre-COVID, we talked about it. And even mid-COVID, you know, Mrs. Gale and Mrs. Brown were like, we need to figure out a way to do this because we think it will create, you know, a, a two-pronged opportunity for our schools. So that's exactly it. And as I mentioned, Skyler Achievement, that's how they did their embedded professional development, is to balance their community schools effort with their professional development needs they need for their teacher. is to balance their community schools effort with their professional development needs they need for their teachers. And so coming from a couple of different research-based places to do that type of model.
Someday it would be interesting, I don't know if we gathered the data in this way, but we've often looked at like ten percent of the, ten percent of instructional time is actually covered by subs, right? And so it'd be interesting to be able to start looking at of that ten percent, how much are we covering with enrichment versus how much are we covering with two subs? It just seems like the more enrichment we can do, the more effective it is. And we know that part of the challenge for some of our students is the lack of enrichment in their environment, right? When you're faced with a story on the New York State assessment about horseback riding, that, you know, privileges a certain set of people who've had some exposure to horseback riding, right? And so having more exposure, whether that's through an actual field trip or through virtual field trip or through hands-on activities really helps our kids in, they need academic work as well, but they also need that exterior enrichment. So. Anyone else have anything they want to say? I know we're a little bit behind schedule, but I know we could have an entire meeting just on this. So I'm trying to not, we're good? Okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Wilson Turner, for this and for the prior presentation and for everything that you do. We really appreciate it. And that brings us now to the school year calendar, always the exciting, mentally twisting subject of the school year calendar. Mrs. Bechtel.
Thank you so much. It is a hard challenge here after those really content-rich presentations that we had to get into this logistics conversation. But in any case, the committee met. This is our committee makeup here. We had our first meeting back in November. We were working without a finalized BOSI's calendar or Regent's schedule, which we would expect. But after doing this for this many years, I'm able to make pretty decent projections about how those things will go. So this is the draft calendar on this that I'll be presenting tonight. Don't we keep going? Our charge is to provide the Board of Education with a calendar for the upcoming school year that best meets the needs of students and staff and effectively addresses issues of teaching continuity. So I do like to go through the process for those that might be new to calendar. We do schedule one hundred and eighty seven days in our calendar, which is more than many districts do. And that's contractual, largely a contractual item and to get more days of instruction in. But it does cause some complexities when we go to schedule our calendar, which people are aware of and they don't understand why we aren't like other districts. Well, we do actually schedule more days. We schedule two teacher PD days by the APSTA contract. One is a teacher prep day that has to occur before school, children begin attending school. We are allowed four superintendent conference days that count as student attendance days. We schedule sixteen days off as per the APSU contract. Thirteen of those days are prescribed and an additional one was added Juneteenth, June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. So those are fourteen of the sixteen days are prescribed. We have some leeway with the other two. We, of course, must be in session first date testing, scoring days, and we always consider the BOSI's calendar for days off. And we certainly must consider BOSI's calendar for long breaks because we do have out-of-district placements that we must pay attention to. These are our recommended priorities. We have no student attendance on election days for safety and security reasons. I will say in two thousand and twenty-three, the CSDA budget vote will impact all district schools. We do those votes in our schools. The general election still impacts Montessori and Abrokin. We have a call into the Board of Elections to find out if we are going to be able to move those out of those schools, particularly the elementary school. Abrokin could probably more easily manage it. But we would like to no longer conduct the election at Montessori. So we'll see how that goes. We have a staff PD day prior to the first day of school in that, or we try to anyway. In addition to the APSTA teacher prep day, we try to avoid end-of-year PD days because we don't get the best bang for the buck. People are tired and not as ready to receive professional development. We consider any discretionary days with these parameters in mind, our contracts, of course, are these priorities, the academic needs of students and maintaining appropriate levels of staffing. A few items for discussion, while that I just wanted to remind the board that the Regent's testing days and spring break are, they are conjecture. We're waiting on NICE and BOSI's calendars. I did get a peek at a draft BOSI's calendar, so, but nothing has been finalized. The last time I checked was last week, I think. Religious holidays and then the remaining teacher PD day, which we, you'll see in the draft calendar, would occur on the school board budget vote day in May. And then something that we've put in place last year is where we have instead of snow days that we go, have gone to virtual days. And I know this is a subject that some people feel strongly about one way or another. It has worked to our advantage because it has given us flexibility. We do schedule three days for snow, we deliver, emergency, I should call them. And if we don't use them, then the teachers and staff get them back and we don't have school on those days. So if we actually have virtual days rather than a snow day, if we can pivot to those virtual learning on those days, then we can maintain some of those flexibility of where we're planting those snow days or emergency days in our, in our calendar. And then I think, I'm hoping we, that everyone has available to them the draft calendar. It was in the presentation. So what the formal recommendation won't be made until we have the other calendars finalized. So I will be back in front of the board, but we're tentatively looking at the two additional days off to get to the sixteen being September twenty-sixth and October fifth. September twenty-sixth is day one of Rosh Hashanah and October fifth is Yom Kippur. First days for staff would be Tuesday, August thirtieth and Wednesday, August thirty-first. Though they would become convocation and teacher PD day. I've already discussed with Mr. Petron, who is my co-chair on this committee, how we would have to accommodate those few employees whose work year doesn't begin until September the first, but we can generally work around that. The first day for students, Thursday, September first and Friday, September second. But these would be orientation days. We've really found a great benefit in these last couple of years of COVID in beginning the years, the year with those formal orientation days to acclimate schools, kids to the new school year. It's really worked out. It's been very successful and people would like to keep that in place. Under discussion is the placement of the PD days right now in the draft calendar. We have it on September twenty-seventh, which is day two of Rosh Hashanah. And the other one is March sixth. There's some discussion from the committee about where in March we would put that day. It might be a Friday. It might be a Monday. We haven't totally firm that up, but that is a little more arbitrary. The September twenty-seventh day becoming a PD day would be good because it would be in the beginning of the year. I mean, preferably it would be in that first or second week of September. But we decided that if we were doing the orientations on Thursday, September first and Friday, September second, we didn't want to do a PD day the day after Labor Day because then there'd be so many days between that orientation and when kids actually came to school for their, you know, to start the, that, we didn't think that that was a good idea. So that's really where we are. I did want to mention too about the religious holidays because I know that this year we have that Eid holiday off. Eid in the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and thirty calendar year is on a Saturday. So we don't need to have it in the weekday calendar this year. It's, it just doesn't impact us. For next, the following school year, we might have more of an impact because I believe that both of the Eid holidays fall within the school year. But we will deal with that one a year from now. So for now, I think that's it. I would take any questions. If you have any questions on the draft calendar, I have it up here on my laptop as well.
And I know my board colleagues know and hopefully members of the community who are watching this know that you can easily access that draft calendar on the agenda so that you can see it. It's, it's right there for you. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Bechtel or comments on the work of the Calendar Committee? Thank you, board member Crete, for your liaison work. We appreciate you. I appreciate your noting that the Eids fall on non-school days this year. This school year, I wonder if you would consider, as you have sometimes in the past, placing them in the holiday dates. I know like for some, some years, Rosh Hashanah will fall on a Saturday and it'll appear in our dates list, even though it doesn't impact our calendar, just so it stays part of our mental consciousness about what's important and what we value as a district. So that's, that would be one suggestion I have.
Sure. Yeah, we can make that work.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or thoughts?
And I just wanted to comment that I know this is very difficult work. Logistics are always incredibly complex, especially when you're dealing with a district our size with so many different beliefs and needs for time off. So, Ms. Bechtel, thank you so much. Thank you for your team and to the Calendar Committee. You guys are always keep staying on top of what's important. So much appreciation to you guys.
This one didn't cause us too many problems. There were, there were no real ultimate conflicts, I don't think. So this was, I think, an easier year for the calendar.
Can you talk a little bit about that? I know this is something I bring up every year and I, I always appreciate a reminder about that hanging Monday on May fifteenth and whether you think that there's value in even worrying about that. I know we have those two snow days around Memorial Day. So we end up very, very frequently between virtual days and climate change. We end up very, very frequently with a five-day Memorial Day weekend. And I always struggle with why that's better than having a four-day weekend around the budget break followed by a four-day weekend around Memorial Day so that you don't end up with a hanging Monday. And I'm just curious, again, what the, what the thought is on that, on the Calendar Committee.
Yeah, and I think that's, that is a choice in this calendar. If the board, board so desired for me to bring that back to the committee, we certainly could discuss it. I, I think that folks on the committee felt that attendance-wise, the, you know, the Tuesday, the, I think it's the sixteenth of May, that it hasn't, you know, we haven't looked at the attendance recently. I suppose we could go back and look at that data and see how that has worked out and if there is really any sort of attendance impact that would make us lean one way or the other. I can bring that data back to the committee. But they, the committee really liked the idea of having that, that longer weekend. It was something attractive to folks.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious, not just attendance-wise, but also just pedagogically. I would imagine as a teacher, if I'm trying to put together a lesson plan, it's a series of lesson plans for a week. It's nice to have the days contiguous and not have that, that day interrupting in the middle. But, but I'm not a teacher and I'm, you know, I just want to know that the reasons that we make these decisions are for the benefit of the students who we're all here to serve. That's always my fundamental question.
Right. I do think that there's, I do think that this is literally one of those choice decisions to make. I don't know that the hanging Monday is a terrible thing, especially at this point in the year. The other thing is, is that we are in AP and IB testing at this point. And while that's really very heavy for the first and second week, we do go into the third week for either some makeups or other things. So I, I, I guess, and then people, you know, it's another reason.
It can be an AP exam on the fifteenth, right?
There, there could potentially be, it is, I'd have to go back and check that. But the, it's the first and second week, but the third week, there's an awful lot going on as well. I know that Leah Evans has let me know that while the, the hard scheduled dates are week one and two, there, there is some activity that occurs in week three as well. So particularly, I think, for IB. So, you know, to have that day off, I remember the year that we did do that was a little bit problematic for her. We've actually had in the past where we've had a day off in this period of time where we've had AP exams and have brought kids in to take those tests if they were so scheduled.
My last thought is if, in fact, we do need to use Montessori for education, which, I mean, for voting, which I think would therefore mean that the students would be virtual, right? That's what we did this year. I would hope that we could get that on the calendar so that it's on the family-friendly calendar from the beginning of the year so parents could plan for it if, if we know in time to do that.
I will, I'll add, I'll add the information that we have met with the Board of Elections and they do have a goal of transitioning out of our schools. And that's why we're down to two. If you recall, we did have more, but we're down to two now. And so they have been very, very cooperative. They are fully supportive of trying to move out of Montessori and we understand that and they understand that. But I know that that's also looking for a location as well. And so I just want to make sure that it is on the record that this is not anything that is contentious. It is something that in our meeting with the Board of Elections, this was a few years ago, they did express that they are trying to move those locations, the voting locations out of the schools. So we know that that's on their, in their plan. It's just a matter of when that will happen.
I understand. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anyone else with questions for the calendar? Otherwise, I expect the next time we could do this very briefly, right? Because we'll have, have everything in front of us and just need to adopt it once, once we have the final calendars out of BOSI's and the State Department of Education.
That is correct.
All right. Did you have something else? I didn't want to cut you off.
No, I, I think I was just going to end it. If there were any revisions from this, for example, that March PD date, I would just make note of that and, and we could, you know, just have a very brief couple of minutes presentation and then a vote.
Sounds good. Okay, so the last bit of work we have to do tonight is really board business. The, we've done this each year over the last several years. Just for benefit of anybody listening to the meeting from home, the board is a very reflective board and each year we do do a board self-evaluation using a series of rubrics provided by the New York State School Boards Association in order to evaluate our own performance and identify areas in which we think that we have room for improvement. And we take those, those areas where we would like to improve or work in a different way and we consolidate them into board goals. And this year, as in prior years, we have increased our comfort level with our own systems. We are now a pretty senior board, right? Almost everybody has been on the board for two or more years, which makes us a pretty senior board. Lots of, very little turnover in the last few years. So everybody kind of knows, here's how I ask a question or here's how I get something on the agenda. Those things are very comfortable for us. So that has been reflected in the outcome of our, of our evaluation of our board metrics. And so this year, we decided to really try and focus, as Ms. Smith said a little while ago, try and focus our efforts on the most critical things because we know, especially in the time of COVID, how difficult it's been for us to do anything. And that's why we're always so amazed by Dr. Wilson Turner's continuing to make progress on the enrichment work because we're all like, wait, we had board goals and we had a really hard time delivering on them because of everything that was going on. So we're always impressed by the ability of the cabinet-level staff and all the people working with them throughout the district to continue to make good progress on these important activities that aren't so urgent as COVID. But in any case, for this year, we narrowed down to three goals and four activities, which are on the screen in front of you. and four activities which are on the screen in front of you. We've also, we're also going to try, instead of identifying a single person responsible for each one, to identify these small committees. These committees are proposed. I'm certainly open to other ways of rearranging people and to make everyone happy and get with the things that they want to work on the most. But the goal is effectively communicating district priorities and continuing to improve two-way communication. And the two activities related to that are a virtual forum regarding our work to dismantle systemic racism within our districts. That would be very heavily reliant on the work Dr. Wilson Turner talked about tonight. That's one activity. The second activity is to more effectively communicate with the community regarding the board role and the opportunity to serve as an elected board member. We will have board elections this year. Every year, we have two board seats that are up for election. And depending on people's choices, we anticipate this year only one incumbent plans to run. So we will be looking for candidates to serve in the school district. Goal two, engaging professional meaningful development for the board. We have always, for many, many years, relied on the New York State School Boards Association to provide professional development. And as we talked about a little bit ago, Ms. Smith and I have been interacting with school board partners, which is another way that we access professional development for board members. And the district has been very instrumental in providing culturally responsive education training for the board. That has been a very valuable experience, I think, for all board members. But we are looking to be extremely thoughtful about that and really think hard about what kind of professional development we think board members need and what the budget for that might be. And so that's our second goal and third activity. And then finally, goal three, which has been a goal for some time, is to finalize the Team Operations Manual. We do have an adopted Team Operations Manual, but it is fallen woefully out of date, and we are attempting to bring it current. And not only bring it current, but create a system for maintaining its currency over the long term. And so Ms. Smith has been heading that project up, and we'll, hopefully, we anticipate being able to get that done, we hope, no later than the end of this school year, June of 2022. And so those are our goals and objectives that we designed to find together through our retreat just a few weeks ago. And so I'm sorry to have talked for so long. I'm certainly open to conversation about any edits you all would like to see in these or changes in who's on what committee or whatnot. And we will not act on these tonight. As usual, we will act on them in two weeks in case we've had further opportunities to reflect. Anybody have anything they want to add? Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith, you are on mute.
Okay, thank you. So just real quickly, I wanted to just express this. Thank you, Madam President, for your time in recent weeks, actually, on the Board Operations Team Manual. And I'll be ready shortly to contact Ms. Mann and Dr. Shatur about our next, you know, review of that. And then we will have everyone take a look at that also. I request that Superintendent Adams in Cabinet take a look at that for input and some clarity if need be. So I really hope it's well before, I mean, we can adopt it in June, but I want to kind of keep that moving since it has taken a bit of time. But I think we'll be really closer to like February, March when we finish up. So thank you.
Anybody else with comments or thoughts on board goals, board self-evaluation, anything you want to say? If not, then I will return to our regularly scheduled agenda, which brings us, I think, to board committee reports. Any board committee reports? All righty, that's going to.
Madam President, did we want to do the video from Montessori?
Yeah, I was just going to say other business, and that would be Superintendent Adams. I know you have an item of other business.
Yes, this earlier in the evening, we did not get the video moving. And so we failed to show that. And so we do have a video. Mr. Baker made me aware that we do have a video from Montessori, and I appreciate that, Mr. Baker, because we absolutely want to show our students and highlight Montessori this evening. And so at this time, Mr. Baker will move forward with the video from Montessori.
My favorite things about Montessori are that we foster independence with our students. We make sure that they learn in a warm and loving environment, that we provide as many learning opportunities for our students using hands-on activities and the Montessori philosophy.
I think my favorite thing is having the opportunity to be part of the student support team. I feel that social, emotional needs of the kids come before they're able to learn in the classroom. I have an awesome partner, Sarah Caridori, the school psychologist I work with. And with Sarah, we're able to look at, you know, community issues, social problems, things in the classroom. And we have like the leeway and the support of the school to really personalize district initiatives and roll those out in our school.
My favorite thing about Montessori is being completely surrounded by adults who are passionate about what they do. Every colleague of mine lives and breeds Montessori, and for them, that means dedicating their own time and resources to creating materials and experiences that engage our kids in every way possible. And the flip side of that is we're surrounded by kids who soak up every single bit of energy that we put into making this experience a really engaging one for them. And that energy just fuels this place.
I love the staff being here. They took me in like I was here for years. And everybody is great here. I love the kids. I love the building.
I feel very supported at Montessori by the staff, the leadership, and the parents and MCC. As soon as I got hired for the district and knew I was coming to Montessori, the leadership at the time really, really thought it was important that I go through Montessori training, and I was afforded that opportunity. And ever since then, I've felt like we at Montessori are a huge family that help one another. We share materials and ideas.
Even though I work with a whole school, there is a small pod here. We have four special ed rooms. We have 25 students with severe autism with about 20 staff members. And it's a very supportive group. I work with in that group. Those students 10 years ago wouldn't have been served in district. And I'm really proud of the fact that we're a team. We work really hard to meet the needs of those students and to work with those families to get the services that their children need. So I'm really proud of that.
I think what makes Montessori special is the families that surround us and support us. No matter what challenges we're facing, whether they're global ones or ones within our building, our families are there to know that we're providing their children with an experience that is hands-on, that meets every child's needs, and they're enthusiastic about that. That makes going to work every day a really exciting experience.
Yes, I do. It's, the teachers is very supportive. They help us out with a lot of things, knowing that we have extra work since the pandemic began. The president is very, very supportive of what we do here, and I just love it.
It means to, like, if you see a paper on the ground, don't pick it up and pass it to other people. Don't just throw it away. Maybe see whose it is or hand to the person with the name on it. Second, working by yourself. You want to be independent. You don't want to fool around with others. You really want to try to get your work done. And if you don't, and you get a little bit of it done, just make sure you're happy with yourself and you tried. And the third one is working with others. You don't want to take advantage of them. You want to only like have them answer the questions. You just sit around doing nothing. You really want to work as a team.
It says all safe, respectful, and responsible. Active learning. We do stuff with our bodies and hands to learn. Independent learning. We get to partner learn, and kids get to give and take lessons as well.
Does it mean to be Montessori?
At Montessori, we're all a family. It's so nice to see enthusiastic, self-motivated learners. And it's just a joy to come every day and see our students ready to get to school, ready to learn, and really ready to guide their own education.
When I think about being Montessori, the first thing I think about is looking within myself. It's about being self-reflective and self-aware. What's the energy that I'm putting out into the world? And how am I treating others around me? How am I treating my environment? And how am I treating myself? The second part as an educator about being Montessori is being responsive to and observant of my children around me and how I can meet each of their specific needs and grow them into independent learners.
I think what it means to me to be Montessori is that as a Montessori educator, we take the district curriculum and we put it through the Montessori lens, and we create hands-on activities for kids. I also think being Montessori means that we foster independence. We foster ownership, whether it's of their work academically or of their behavior. We're providing students with an opportunity on how to learn to be a better global citizen and look out for one another, especially when going on into the middle school and beyond.
I get to be with all my friends. I get to use colorful materials. I really love art and recess. Mrs. Golden and Mr. Powell are really nice.
So you've been here since pre-K, all the way through grade 5. What things are you going to miss most as you prepare to leave Montessori?
I'm going to miss all my teachers that I've had in the past. I'm going to miss all my classmates, especially the ones that I was actually close to. I'm going to miss the school in general. I'm going to miss all the people, all, everyone, really. Everybody is like so nice at the school.
Thank you very much for allowing us to go back and enjoy this video. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a very nice way to end is that there's actually some benefits to ending with the kids as well as having them at the beginning. And let's see, I know everybody wants to hear the famous words, "Let's entertain a motion to adjourn." But sadly, no, that is not what we are going to say. I am, however, going to entertain a motion to enter executive section to discuss the employment history of several people and matters leading to their continued employment. Can I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Wilson, second by Ms. Drumanyawi. All in favor of entering executive session? That is unanimous times six. I know that Dr. Shatur dropped off the call a little bit ago, so I hope he is feeling better. I will see you guys all in exec in a moment. And thank you, everyone else. We are not planning to return to public session except for to formally adjourn the meeting. So there's no, you can certainly hang around and watch for a blank screen, but nothing else is going to happen tonight. We will see you next week. We do tentatively have scheduled a meeting, special meeting to discuss the Peter pattern. But as discussed earlier, that's subject to further conversation.